All right, good morning. It looks like we are ready to begin. Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. We are going to begin with the flag salute led by Supervisor Jones.
Please join me in the renewal of the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we are going to begin with our consent agenda and all items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the county executive department. All items will be approved by a single roll call vote. Anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the board taking action, and the item may be removed for discussion. So any of my colleagues want to remove an item? No? And anyone in the public like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing nobody in the chambers, anyone online?
I see none, Chair.
All right, then I'll bring it back to our board.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Jones, second by Gustafson. Roll call, please.
Landon?
Yes.
Dematte?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Great, motion carries, and next we will move to public comment. Persons may address the board on any items that are not on this agenda. We will ask you to keep your public comment to three minutes, and today we will limit public comment to 15 minutes total, and if we have to do more later, we can do that. All right, Mr. Wedge, good morning, how are you?
Kane Versa, again, my name is Jason Wedge, and I want to address the Agenda Item 6A, School-Based Mental Health, from February 4th.
Oh, from, sorry, continue, thank you, from February.
From February, February 4th. So there are some key issues that were spoken during this Agenda item. Supervisor Landon mentioned a key component on mental health that is not addressed is the faith component, thank you for that. School districts should proceed with caution with mental health treatments. We are spending, we are spending more and more money on mental health and not receiving any better results. Seems like the same with our homelessness. The Board of Supervisors should not be making decisions that should be made by our local school board members. Finally, this is all tied to community-school model, and this is something that our Governor Newsom is pushing, so that right there should be very alarming. Supervisor Dematte, you asked an amazing question last, last meeting. Why do we have such a need in mental health screening in today's world that we probably didn't have 10 to 15 years ago? And would like to see the data on this. Also, do these recommendations supersede the consent from a parent? The simple answer would be because 10, 15 years ago, there wasn't much money to be made on mental health. More money does not solve the problem. Think of it as COVID. The more you can treat and the more you can test, the more you can be funded. And PCO even mentioned that this can turn into a mandate which rights from parents will be lost. Your decision was not a well-informed one. Supervisor Jones, you questioned the wording on the document that was provided and even asked what actually should be said. Supervisor Gustafson, you said the way the Agenda item was written, that you did not have enough time to read each contract. And Supervisor Gore, you said you do not have the expertise in this and only had two days to look into this. In closing, many reached out to you, including myself, to table this so you can gather the information necessary to make an informed decision. PCOE are not the experts on mental health, but are experts on funding and finding fundings. And all grant fundings come with strings attached, which was not shared with you. And it was my district, Auburn Union School District, that was compromised that this data leaked, that leaked out, this personal information that got out to the community. So that is very discerning, and discerning for our district alone. And I just want to make a point that this is not against mental health whatsoever, but these grants and what they're trying to do has little to, little to nothing to do with mental health. It is basically, the end goal is to provide healthcare clinics in all school campuses. And I can provide you the data with that, if you guys can reach out to me, and, and I would help to guide you along to the conclusion that I come up with. It's very concerning to our children and to our parental consent. So, thank you, and I hope to hear from each, each and every one of you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Jennifer, Placer County. I just want to talk a little bit about some stuff happening again in Southern California, because it's quite clear now that everything that's happening down there is going to affect us, because we're actually part of the same state. So, February 13th, there was a big discussion about banning natural gas heaters. And this is water heaters for the home, for businesses, schools, and so what. This was happening in Los Angeles, San Bernardino, Riverside, and Orange Counties. So basically, this, what they're trying to do here is to make it illegal to buy or sell natural gas water heaters at like Home Depot, Lowe's, any of these major heating or places that would supply these types of things. This also means then, if your gas heater, water heater goes out at your house, you cannot put a new one in, you have to switch to electric. So what does that mean? So, electric means, so going from a house that can cost between $6,000 and $20,000 just to replace that unit to be up to code with our state standards. For small businesses and schools, apartment buildings, that's $300,000 to $800,000 to, to fix this situation in the building. So as things die off, you can't replace it with the old, you have to start spending a lot of money to do this. And I'm just curious how this would affect things like our low-income housing we're trying to do, because what I'm seeing is, again, citizens aren't being protected. So, are the tax-paying citizens who've lived here forever may not be able to afford to stay in their homes or have to take loans out, get extra jobs, not have certain things, not pay for certain things, because they have to go ahead and gum up to this mandate that doesn't make sense. And it's electric, water heaters take more energy to run than gas also. So, so none of this really makes any sense. And so I think it's really important that we, we actually voice our, our opinions to these people down in Southern California and support citizens saying no to this, because this will become a statewide mandate if this starts passing. They're doing a testing ground down there about trying to create this to happen, and if they can get it a foothold in anywhere, it's going to go statewide, because it goes in with the 2030 plan for Newsom to go into the VAT, which I don't have time to talk about, and just become energy-efficient and get rid of gas. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anyone else in the chambers like to make a comment on an item not on this, not on the agenda? Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Sherry, and I live at the Mobile Temporary Shelter here in Auburn. I frequent here a lot, so. Something has recently come up that's very disturbing for me, because I have just found out recently that I have some health issues. And with those health issues, I have to learn how to eat more, better, eat better for myself, you know, to cook my own food and stuff. Well, I was told the other day when I pulled out my George Foreman to cook my food, that I'm not allowed to cook there. And so that kind of, it's kind of disturbing for me, because I have nowhere else to cook. And so that, does that mean I have to starve? You know, I mean, I'm not getting the gist or understanding of why we can't cook our own food there. It's a George Foreman. We use microwaves there. We, we're allowed to charge our boxes, we're allowed to do, but we can't use something to cook our food with. You can use a toaster, you can, but can't use something else to cook to make your meals more healthy? And I mean, they serve a lot of food with red sauce in it, and I have a severe problem with acid reflux, so I can't eat a lot of the foods that they serve there. And I've tried to express that to them, and they don't seem to make any way, any other way to like help out with bringing something different. So I make sure I take care of myself to feed myself. But fast food only goes so far, and I can't even really eat fast food anymore, because it's really starting to affect my health. I'm just trying to figure out what's okay and what's not okay, because when I first got there, they let us cook there. And up until just recently, we could cook there. I'm not sure what the gist of it is, and they keep blaming it on the county, so I'm no better place to bring it than here, because this is the county, right? This is where I need to go to find out, the information I need to find out. So if we can get some kind of knowledge about why we're not allowed to eat, cook there, or whatever, or what we could do to make some kind of exchange for the time or whatever for, to do that, that would be really helpful for someone like me, and there's a couple other people too. Anyways, thank you for letting me speak in front of you guys, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you, appreciate that. And if there's not, you come on up, and if there's anyone after her, you're welcome to stand behind her in line, so we can move along, I appreciate it. Good morning.
Good morning, I'm Anne Hendrickson, and I live on Cicely Road in Penrind. My heart goes out to people like that, because everyone needs healthy food. I'm here about the preservation and safety concerns for Cicely Road. The Lincoln Highway, named after Abraham Lincoln, was the first transcontinental road linking the east coast to the west, originally spanning from Times Square to San Francisco. It was dedicated in 1913 with celebrations across 13 states. Today, only two remaining sections of the original Lincoln Highway exist, one in Omaha, Nebraska, and the other here in Penrind, California, on Cicely Road. Given its historic significance, Cicely Road deserves preservation. Concerns have arisen regarding the recent survey conducted by Duberry Engineering and National Development and Construction Corporation. Considering Cicely Road's historic importance, wouldn't the Placer County Historic Advisory Board or California's Office of Historic Preservation have been better suited to conduct such a survey? Despite this, the survey results indicated that at least half of the residents support maintaining Cicely Road and preserving as much of its original structure as possible. One resident aptly expressed, quote, "If you must repair, then please leave as much of the original concrete as possible. There are very few places where we can see the actual rocks and old concrete and truly see this history. It may seem like progress and efficiency, but it is a loss of our ability to see and touch history and share that with our children. Eventually, we will forget this fantastic part of history that runs right through our fabulous community," unquote. Beyond historical significance, safety remains a pressing issue. As regular walkers on Cicely Road, my friend and I often feel at risk due to excessive speeding. The road is the shortest route from Taylor Road to the Project 8 Winery, which will likely increase traffic, including wine tasting visitors. If the road is paved smoothly, speeding and impaired driving will pose an even greater threat to residents. Tragically, a child was struck while biking on Cicely Road a few years ago. The presence of a day school, where the speed limit is 30 miles an hour, adds further concern as parents frequently park on both sides of the road during drop-off and pickup times. Additionally, speeding vehicles regularly hit animals. Despite the 20 mile-per-hour speed limit in front of our driveway, drivers rarely adhere to it. To ensure community safety, weight-limit signs should be installed at both ends of Cicely Road to divert large grape hauling trucks into, onto Taylor Road, the only safe alternative. Lastly, it is concerning that the proposal to pave Cicely Road coincides with the approval of the High Production, one more sentence, may I? Coincides with the production, okay, approval of the High Production Project 8 Winery. This is merely, is this merely a coincidence, or does Mr. Fournier's involvement raise further questions? In closing, as the saying goes, once you pave over history, you can't get it back. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right, seeing nobody else in the chambers, we'll move to online public comment.
Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I'm Laura Bullard, and I'm a lifelong Placer County resident and landowner. You know, when I was in high school, I took a college-level accounting class, and a professor gave a profound piece of advice. He said, "For every minute that goes by, that is a minute that you can never get back. Invest it wisely." I think about that quote every time I am sitting in traffic in Placer County, which unfortunately is a lot lately. And I ask myself, "Who has done this to my wonderful county?" That is, this is not the county I was raised in, nor is it the county that the families move into. They move here to get away from that kind of mess. The clear answer as to who has done this to my county is in part the Placer County Board of Supervisors, as you have the ability to work with residents, not developers, of the county to plan the development that is going on, as well as to limit the size and scope of that development. You have the ability to listen to the residents through things like the MACs to make sure that when a developer comes to violate community plans and a MAC unanimously says no to a project, you need to listen, and all of you should vote no. I watched in disgust in December as this board, and you also, Anthony, as you were on the planning commission, approved a project in the Dry Creek area called The Ranch, which the MAC unanimously voted against and which violated our community planned land use provisions, which I'm going to be providing you guys more specifics later. Shanti, you said that your family used to live in the Natomas, and look what they did there. That's exactly the point. We don't want it to happen here. And as the county moves forward in doing things like rewriting the general plan, you guys need to make sure that, number one, the residents of Placer County have input. Number two, communities have a say in the design and development of their areas. And three, that you listen to what those communities say when the developers want to alter that. Right now, I'm working to get Placer County residents to give their input into rewriting of the general plan, and I'm finding that people are having a hard time giving their input as they are not even aware that there's a survey and how to access it. Please, as you move forward, you need to work with the residents of the county to make sure that we have a say in our future. Don't turn us into a Los Angeles, or a Bay Area, or a Natomas. We don't want to be that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Yeah, hi. Scott Holbrook here. Is this me live? I can't tell, I hate to.
You know, Scott, we cannot hear you very well at all.
Is this any better?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry. Anyway, thanks. I just wanted to give a little call, a little discouraged about the way that whole Super 8 thing went down.
And we lost you again, can't hear you.
Holbrook, Scott Holbrook?
Yeah, it's very light, but keep trying.
Okay. I'm sorry, like I say, I'm not a tech guy, I should have used my phone. But anyhow, one of the biggest concerns I have are these single-source contracts that you keep dealing out. You did a major one for the tent shelter a couple years ago, which cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars. You again are doing that at the Super 8. Did not go out to competitive build bidding. I think you really need to review your, your non-competitive bid contracts and really do the community a service by not, not doing that as often as you are. And I also want to say I really support Shanti's thoughts on getting a good DOGE program here at Placer County. I think it's time. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Scott. Next caller, please.
Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Greetings, Supervisors. This is Diane Weasel, L.C., Prairie Park Community Services District. I am first going to commend Shanti for at least considering a DOGE-type approach, but from the public standpoint. The only thing that will quell that and take its impact away is the fact that I am personally, right now, trying to acquire a bunch of HHS-centric documents under CPRA. And this is the whole problem, and what's wonderful about the DOGE is that they're exposing what I've been saying to you all for a long time. When you have not-for-profit, nonprofit, or private contracts, especially with the nonprofits, your contracts are not, so far that I can see, putting in the parameters for performance and/or for sanctions when they don't perform. Furthermore, you need to get their records. This whole thing that's going on in Washington right now is because of the way Citizens United opened up the door and made every entity a person. Therefore, it can act like a person, it can do everything, it can make contributions, depending on what kind of structure it is. But unless the contracts are ironclad and you are getting physical copies in, you know, custody, our auditor controller, Andy Sisk, has his hands tied. He can't look at things that are not in your custody without doing a forensic audit. There's, you have to have that built in, and me, from the public, as in our coalition, we're getting stonewalled by legal, because they're holding out the fact that it's CPRA, and we don't have to use Placer County as a clearinghouse to obtain the records directly from the partners who are getting uploaded with the grant money passed through either state, federal, or whatever, straight from us. And then there's a cutoff. I can't access that public money receipts directly from the entity you're contracting with? That's absurd, just because it's, quote, "within the law." That's how you open it up, and that's how DOGE is exposing everything. And I want to commend the prior speakers real quickly. The first gentleman that spoke, perfect example. And he so eloquently put that these contracts in mental health and the housing is set up to be just a lifeblood sucker. That's it. So with that, I'm going to yield that I commend the people in there that are standing up to these things, and just because it grants there doesn't mean we should take it, and I realize we're in big trouble.
Thank you, Diane, appreciate your comments.
Caller, can you please unmute your mic and give your comments? Caller with the number ending in 7747, can you unmute your mic and give your comments?
All right, if not, why don't we go to the next one?
Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments. Peter Davidson, can you unmute your mic and give your comments? No such luck, Chair.
All right, okay. With that, we will close public comment. Thank you, everyone, for connecting with us, and we'll next move to our board member and county executive reports. Do any of my colleagues have any report out? No? All right, well then, because it is not 9:30, hopefully I've got somebody from Agriculture, Parks, and Natural Resources, Mr. Huntsinger, come on up, appreciate you being here, and we will take Item 8A, which is Forest Health Strategic Planning Implementation Services and Agreement with M.J.N. Advisors.
Good morning, Chair Gore and board members. It's a pleasure to be with you this morning. My name is Josh Huntsinger, I'm the Director of Agriculture, Parks, and Natural Resources for Placer County. I am requesting three actions today, including, number one, approve and authorize the Director of Agriculture, Parks, and Natural Resources or designate to execute an agreement with MNJ Advisors, Inc. for Forest Health Strategic Planning and Implementation Services in an amount not to exceed $130,000 for the period of February 19th, 2025, through February 18th, 2027, subject to county council and risk management occurrence, concurrence, excuse me. Number two, authorize the Director of Ag Parks and Natural Resources or designate to execute amendments to the agreement up to $13,000 consistent with county procurement policies, subject to county council and risk management concurrence. And number three, determine that the proposed actions are not projects pursuant to Sequoia Guidelines, Section 15378. So as far as background goes on this item, on July 9th, 2024, your board approved the county's Regional Forest Health 10-Year Action Plan. That plan focuses on initial wildfire risk reduction efforts across 22,000 acres of land, across 31 projects that were identified through the Land Tender Vibrant Planet effort that you are all familiar with. This proposed two-year agreement with MNJ Advisors intended to accomplish several things, including, increase the short-term program capacity, so adding, adding more staff to move this 10-year action plan forward by augmenting the capacity of our existing three-person team. Secondly, provide analysis and recommendations regarding additional staff that and/or other resources that may be needed to fully accomplish this mission that you've given us in the long term. Next, propose, perform outreach and assistance related to the CAL-FRAME effort to create a partnership in the central Sierra region with Nevada and El Dorado counties so that we can pool resources, pull our advocacy efforts together, and look at more biomass disposal solutions in a more regional approach. And then lastly, work to aggregate and quantify the collective forest health and wildfire prevention efforts of all the partners in Placer County, including local, state, and federal partners, and just really quantify the overall collective effort of all, all partners here in Placer County. The ultimate purpose of these efforts is to ensure that, on the ground, forest health work begins as soon as possible and ensure that Placer County takes full advantage of state and federal opportunities for funding and policy change. I want to thank PCWA, Placer County Water Agency, as a partner who is fun, who will be funding 50% of this contract. I'm not sure if Mr. Fecco has gotten here yet. He was scrambling to get here and was fully intending to. And we just, with that, I'll conclude, and thank you for your consideration, and happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you, Josh. Any questions for my colleagues? I do have one quick question, Josh, it's a two-year contract, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you, that's helpful. I will open this up to the public, any questions from the public? All right, and it looks like we have some comments online.
Caller, are you unable to unmute your mic?
Mr. Davidson? All right, perhaps not Mr. Davidson, then Mr. Garabedian.
Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Mr. Garabedian, we can't hear you. I wonder if it's us. No, we heard everybody else, so it's not us. All right. And it looks like he took down his hand. All right, okay. Well, then we will close, close public comment, and heads up, this is, oh, his hand is back up. Let's try Mr. Garabedian one more time. Sorry, Mr. Randall, we may not get to you. I know you were hoping.
Mr. Garabedian, are you unable to unmute your mic and give your comments? Mr. Garabedian, are you unable to unmute your mic and give your comments?
So much fun. This may not continue to be in our future. All right. With that, we are going to close public comment. Sorry, Mr. Garabedian, and we'll bring this back to our board. Looks like another opportunity to continue to work together to actually figure out who's doing what with our resource when it comes to wildfire, which we are all very concerned about. With that, anybody else want to opine or move approval?
I just, I wanted to thank Josh and his team for putting this together. I think, more than ever, given potential cuts in federal and state funding, we need to be prepared to have a really clear, specific plan moving forward. So I'm happy to make a motion to approve the three actions, as he read into the record.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Gustafson, second by Dematte. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. All right, then, we are going to move to our ninth- All right, then, we are going to move to our 9:30 timed item. Sorry, because we have lots of people here, I don't want to wait, Matt. And this is the Homeless Services Funding Overview and Program Direction. Good morning, gentlemen. Looks like they're all men.
All right, well, good morning, Chair Gore, members of the board, Jeff Merriman with your CEO's office. Joining me today is Dr. Rob Oldham, your Health and Human Services Director, and we're here to discuss homeless-related contracts, services, and outcomes. So before I continue, I'll read the two actions into the record. Number one is to receive an overview of homeless services funded by the County General Fund, as well as those supported by state and federal funds assigned to Placer County. Number two is to provide staff with preliminary guidance on potential adjustments to county general fund-supported homeless programs. So to start things off, we will be beginning today's discussion by briefly looking at the history of homelessness in Placer County, touching on some key events, takeaways, and metrics. We'll then move to funding, followed by local service outcomes, and finishing with staff recommendations and board discussion. So to start things off, I'll pass to Dr. Rob, the historian on homelessness in the room.
Thanks, Jeff. Rob Oldham with Health and Human Services, and sorry, I'm still a little under the weather with my voice, but it is coming back, but I'll try to save it for today. I'm backed up today, literally, looking over my shoulder is our HHS Assistant Director, Raul Martinez, who has been helping a lot on homelessness as well. So Daniel and Jeff asked us to partner on this item, one, because HHS has a number of homeless, a number of programs that have a nexus to homelessness, and so we could better describe the detail behind some of those programs. But secondly, as Jeff allused to, we've been working on homelessness in Placer County for a little bit longer here, me for a little over a decade on and off, and so it provides a little bit more historical context and about how we got here. So, let's see. Next slide is a busy one that has a timeline of some key events and reviews on homelessness over, really, the last decade or so, and maybe, you know, we have about 30 minutes and 19 slides today, and spend a little bit more time on this one, but not too much, but we can go back to any of these. I know I've had conversations with many of you about kind of the more lengthy story of how we got here on homelessness. But this timeline, I'll point out a couple of key events. First, kind of looking at the first event, April of 2015, and maybe even a little bit of prehistory, so prior to the Marbut study, most of the, I'd say, county-wide strategic planning or planning around homelessness was done by our homelessness continuum of care, the Roseville-Rockland-Placer County Continuum of Care, which is the HUD-designated entity. It's an eight-member board, so Placer County has a seat at the table, as do some of our cities and homeless services organizations. And so previously, they were kind of doing most of the planning countywide around homelessness, but I think a number of factors, including increased encampments, including here at the Government Center, but also in Roseville and other areas, and more talk about, you know, potential emergency shelters, permanent shelters, as opposed to just the pneumatic shelter, which we had previously, got inspired this board, or the Board of Supervisors at the time, right when I was coming here, actually from Fresno County, to commission this Marbut study, to really look at homelessness and look at whether there are things the county could be doing as an entity more to address, really, gaps in services. So that was the Marbut study, really presented, he was a subject matter expert, continues to be, in fact, ended up becoming the federal homelessness czar in a previous administration, but really looked at gaps. He was a subject matter expert and really came in and told the county, you know, here's some ideas of, I think, what you should do, and you'll see the subsequent, a lot of the points after that, including the opening of the mid-Placer Cogit Shelter, just a few months after that report was presented, and many of the other things that happened in the next several years, were in response to the Marbut report, kind of filling in gaps in services. And so maybe the other thing I'll point you to, when we came to the board, when we came to the board with a review, is the, looking at the Regional Homelessness Response Project. So in April of 2023 is when the initial presentation, the final presentation, and November of 2023. This was a process that actually kicked off in July of 2021, again, commissioned by the Board of Supervisors. So maybe in contrast to the Marbut report, which was a subject matter expert coming in and kind of telling us what we should be doing and focusing on gaps, this was more of a process where we engaged with, especially the city partners, who I think had not been really included in the previous Marbut study. So I point that out because we'll refer back to the regional homelessness process later in the presentation. One other thing I'll point out, increasingly, there was, has been state funding in the last several years to address homelessness. So previously, I mentioned most of the funding coming through the federal, kind of, the COC, so increasingly, a state focus with opportunities, including home key dollars, some COVID-related dollars, and whole-person care. And so with that, you know, increased acceleration, we were already doing things like permanent supportive housing, but acceleration of those, which put some pressure, and we ended up putting, citing some housing in places, in communities that historically hadn't had housing cited there. So I think that inspired this desire to really work as a region and come up with some shared goals, but also, just as you'll see, the other key events in June of 2022, started to really get more questions about, like what we're going to be addressing today, where are the investments in homelessness going? So not just looking at service gaps, but looking at the funding and better understanding the whole funding picture, where are this going, and looking at, really, accountability and efficiency in these services. So with that, I'll, unless there's any questions, I'll move on to the next slide. In this, just, I'll stay in the, in history for maybe one more slide, and then get into the present. This slide, really drilling down in that Regional Homelessness Response Project, that it developed, like I said, as part of that process involving the cities, we developed some shared citing criteria for housing, and then developed a South Placer Navigation Center concept, which included a one-year regional residency for eligibility, 180-day maximum length of stay. And then we developed, as I mentioned, regional principles for addressing homelessness, which included decentralized, distributed housing and services, inter-jurisdictional information sharing and collaboration when, while retaining local control and accountability, and balancing compassion with accountability. So getting to the present, or at least the latest point in time count, so this is, the point in time count is, I mentioned, our continuum of care, and actually, the 501(c)(3) that is the administrative entity for both the Roseville-Rockland-Placer County Continuum of Care and the Nevada County Continuum of Care, is the Homeless Resource Council of the Sierras. And so they administered, the last point in time count for which we have data was from 2024. Again, this is one night in late January, counting the number of people who are actually, like, literally homeless, not at risk or homeless, not doubling up, but literally homeless. We had a total of 702 people, who were counted, 366 of those unsheltered, and as you'll see there, the majority of those who are unsheltered, living in South Placer. Looking at trends over time, since 2020, homelessness in Placer County has actually slightly declined, whereas statewide rates have increased rather dramatically in lots of other jurisdictions around the region. They've seen dramatic increase in homelessness over that time, whereas we've seen a decrease. In fact, Placer County now has the second rate, lowest rate of homelessness among all California counties. So talking about, before I talk about the funding, just understanding kind of how the range of services, the continuum of homeless services, we think about different service categories, and actually, these categories were approved by the participants of the Regional Homelessness Response Project. So first, you'll see on the left, prevention, which includes things like rental assistance, eviction prevention, and job training, crisis support, which includes things like shelters, outreach workers, behavioral health services, and then housing, things like interim and permanent supportive housing. And so finally, getting to the actual funding sources for homeless services, and so this slide really has, you see, the two pie charts here, and maybe I'll start, I think, most of the presentation today will be focusing on the pie chart on the left, the county general-funded services, but from HHS's perspective, we really focus more on the ones on the right, so the state and federally funded services. And so this is, refresh your HHS, we're a department, you know, wide range of different disciplines that we focus on, over 100 different programs, largely about five, six of our funding coming from the state and federal government, so about a $300 million annual budget. We have about 700 different contracts, both revenue contracts, getting money, where we have a contract with the state and federal government, often it has a lengthy scope of work with performance metrics and things we have to meet, but also we have many contracts with vendors. So some of these programs we run ourselves with staff, and some of them we have, we contract out, and often, and, you know, we'll do a little bit of both in particular things. So for these state and federal funding services that, on the right, that's sort of how they're divvied up. These are the ones, the 12.9 million of that $300 million budget, are the things that we think really have a strong nexus to housing and homelessness. So again, out of a budget of 300 million is a pretty small percentage, but it's still significant. You'll see there, maybe, starting at 12 o'clock on the pie and moving around the clock, first, the largest bucket, if you will, of state and federal-funded services is permanent supportive housing. I know we've talked with your board here in the last few months, several times, about permanent supportive housing. This is, the permanent supportive housing is probably the one service that has the best outcomes, and also comes with the most funding from the state and federal government. Those two are probably closely linked. I think the funding kind of following the fact that it has very strong outcomes, so about 85% of people in permanent supportive housing remain housed after two years. So we'll show kind of some other outcomes from emergency shelters and others that aren't quite as strong as that. So this has grown over time, so the sources of permanent supportive housing come from different places. Historically, things like HAP, or the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Grant, and Emergency Services Grant, or ESG. Recently, Home Key has been, to the state, has been a huge source of support, both for capital cost for permanent supportive housing, like these Home Key projects, the hotel-motel conversions, but also ongoing operational support. The next one going down, kind of around the clock, intensive case management. This one actually was larger in the past, so it mentioned in the timeline, Whole Person Care, which is a program that went away in 2022, so it's been, I guess, three years now since we've had, the Placer County has been operating Whole Person Care. That was a pilot program, so we had more, really, case management, care coordination, different bundles of service. Medical respite was also under Whole Person Care, and so, actually, Placer County, for the last three years, has had nothing to do with medical respite. So that's been, the, yeah, the managed care plans, the Medi-Cal Managed Care Plans administer the medical respite benefit, and the capital cost for medical respite, and I know that came up with the Medical Respite Project in Lincoln, are funded through, that project through CCE, which is the State Department of Social Services. So things move around quite a bit, whereas we had a role in medical respite before and had contract for medical respite under Whole Person Care. We no longer do, and have it for over three years now. So intensive case management now largely is funded through Medi-Cal, and I mentioned the Medi-Cal Managed Care Plans are taking a lot of that, where the county can choose to contract with the managed care plans or not, but it's actually increasingly more community-based organizations who are contracting directly with managed care plans to provide intensive case management, whereas the county really has a role, we're the Behavioral Health Carve-Out Plan for Managed Care, so focusing on people who have serious mental health conditions and providing intensive case management for those people, including those who are homeless, are at risk of homelessness, I think is, in the future, what we're going to be focusing on, as opposed to a much larger target population. The next one, looking at homeless prevention, these programs, while, you know, not the most robust, we have lots of different homeless prevention programs. I think we get a lot of bang for our buck here, that there, these are programs that, you know, serve a wide swath of people, so we talk about the point-in-time count of about 700 or 702. The number of people served by these types of programs is much larger than that, probably five-to-10-fold larger. These are people who, not just who are at literal homelessness on one night in January, but throughout the course of the year, but also people who are at risk of homelessness. So some examples, I mentioned a number of different homeless prevention programs. There's the CalWorks Housing Support Program, which is funded through the California Department of Social Services, or CDSS, so $1.2 million annually. It provides rental assistance, housing navigation, case management, and financial aid for families in the CalWorks program, covers things like security deposits, utility payments, moving costs, interim shelter assistance, legal services, and credit repair. Next, the Bringing Families Home Program, also funded through CDSS, $542,000 a year. It aims to reduce homelessness in families within the child welfare system and support family reunification. It offers financial assistance and wraparound services, including rental aid, housing navigation, security deposits, and eviction prevention. Next, the CalWorks Mental Health Services, also funded through CDSS, $324,000 annually, provides mental health support to CalWorks participants to promote housing stability. The Home Safe Grant, CDSS funded, $214,000 annually, helps individuals in adult protective services avoid homelessness through case management, financial assistance, eviction prevention, landlord mediation, and home safety improvements. Next, the CalWorks Temporary Housing Program through CDSS, $167,000 a year, offers emergency housing assistance for up to 16 days per year, provides rental assistance for security deposits, last month's rent, and up to two months arrears to prevent eviction. Next, the CalWorks Family Stabilization Homeless Program through CDSS, $136,000 a year, supports CalWorks families in crisis with intensive case management and frequent contact with employment service counselors. Next, the Transitional Age Youth Transitional Housing Program, $123,000 a year, helps young adults aged 18 to 24, especially those formerly in foster care or on probation, to secure stable housing, and enhances coordination between child welfare services and community resources. Next, the CalWorks Substance Abuse Services, $110,000 a year, provides substance abuse support for CalWorks participants to aid in housing stability. And finally, on prevention, the Transitional Age Youth Housing Navigator and Maintenance Program through the HCD, $73,000 a year, provides housing navigators to assist young adults in finding and maintaining housing, overcoming barriers, and improving service coordination. So a lot there, but just wanted to give you a sense of, lots of little pieces of that pie that go in to make up the 2.9 million, which we kind of, we couldn't, we didn't want to put all those pieces in the one piece of the pie, because you wouldn't have been able to read those. And finally, on the 1.3 million in housing vouchers, which also has a number of specialized key voucher programs, I won't read those to you in detail like I did with the homeless prevention, just in the interest of time, but includes Veterans Affairs of supportive housing, our mainstream vouchers, the emergency housing vouchers, and Family Unification Program vouchers. So, and then finally, interim housing, the smallest piece there at the top, is 310,000 for our Casa de Wit Transitional Housing, so interim and transitional housing are kind of used interchangeably. This is one that the federal funding, there used to be more federal funding for interim or transitional housing, and that has really dried up, and so we, this is a program, we would love to share more, you know, expand that, but right now, one, citing these is very challenging, so this is at the Government Center in one of the old barracks, and just there's not a lot of funding for, similar to emergency shelter for interim housing, but a little bit of funding, at least through state and federal dollars, for interim housing. So that's a lot on the right side, and I'm happy to provide more detail, and I think we have, but it's maybe outside of the scope of this report. We really want to focus today on the ones on the left, the County General Funded Services, so $5.7 million, includes outreach, including the homeless liaison team of $2.3 million a year, our emergency shelters, $1.9 million a year, and the Managed Encampment, or MTS, of $1.5 million a year. And I'll have one more slide, and I'll turn to Jeff to really go into all those in more detail. So just wanted to end with this one, the Financial Accountability and Contract Monitoring. So each county contract is assigned a contract administrator and manager who's responsible for monitoring a whole host of different things, including adherence to contract terms, appropriateness of expenditures through contractor invoicing and supporting documentation, and really stakeholder feedback, so meeting with stakeholders on a regular basis and making sure things are going well. And so I mentioned with an HHS, we have about 700 contracts, and so it's largely our program managers, who also supervise, you know, can be dozens of staff, and have usually dozens of programs that they'll be monitoring like this. of programs that they'll be monitoring like this. The entities, including the county and its vendors, that expend $750,000 or more, actually for this fiscal year, that's gone up to a million dollars or more of federal financial assistance in a fiscal year, are subject to the Single Audit Act, which requires a comprehensive audit by an outside accountant. So before I hand over to Jeff, I want to see, turn to my backup here, Raul Martinez, to see if there's anything else that he'd like to add.
Maybe just one thing.
Yeah.
If you could just back up on one slide. Good morning. Raul Martinez, HHS Assistant Director. Maybe just one final point, since Dr. Oldham spent quite a bit of time on homeless prevention. The programs that are listed there, sort of the many programs, they tend to support primarily young adults, especially those that have had experiences in child welfare and also at-risk families that are supported through the California Department of Social Services as well as the California Department of Housing and Community Development. So primarily, you see lots of families and children who've had experiences, also experiences within the child welfare system. So thanks.
Thank you, Raul.
All right. So I do want to take a minute or two to touch on the county's outreach and homeless liaison team. As you saw just a few slides ago, this is kind of the, this is the biggest piece of that local general fund pie. But this team really plays a pivotal role in the success of, you know, the county's approach to homelessness and really the shelter's success as well. So this team is comprised of four deputy sheriffs, also referred to as homeless liaison deputies or HLDs, two deputy probation officers, and eight staff from HHS with a mixture of different positions and roles. This team meets with TGI monthly to review shelter issues, like problematic guests, for example, and also helps to case manage guests who are also having access to HHS in those shelters. I do want to note, you know, you're looking at the figure on this slide, this seems like quite a bit of contacts and calls for service. I want to note that of the 7,378 contacts, 374 of those are to the mid-placer shelters directly. That does not account for calls of service related to the shelter. So for the overall North Auburn area, calls for service related to homelessness and/or transient issues account for 26% of total calls in that area. For comparison, the rest of the county, so from Tahoe all the way to West Placer, similar calls account for 4% of total calls. So, you know, I really just want to highlight the impacts to the mid-placer area by having kind of this centralized approach to homelessness and some of the impacts to our law enforcement stakeholders as well by having this model.
Jeff, just for clarification, is that an annual number?
Yeah, that is for fiscal year 20 through 24.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm breaking down some of the metrics for all shelters. We can see here that on average, shelters are either close to or at capacity, with congregate being the highest at 96%. Congregate, sorry, also has the longest length of stay. However, in general, we can see from the graph on the right that at 90 days, about 80% of all guests exit the shelter. One thing to consider is that, you know, both mid-placer shelters rely heavily on housing, with almost half of all guests in the mid-placer shelters housing-ready, but no housing option to go to. So, you know, this obviously plays a significant role when we get beyond 90 days and start looking at those long-term guests that don't have a housing option. So in looking at admissions and exits, I do want to note that the main difference with admission to the congregate or MTS is that the MTS, the Mobile Temporary Shelter, does not require sobriety tests for entry. While there's no formal residency requirement in the contracts for either shelter, the HLT team and TGI have worked together to formalize a two-week residency requirement, really relying on the HMIS state system for verification. And we'll touch on residency a couple more times too in the presentation. So for exits from the shelters, we can see here that for mid-placer, the majority of guests exit due to noncompliance, so i.e. breaking shelter rules or violence or something to that nature. Those who moved on to housing options are covered in the kind of whitish color there and light green figures. One thing I'd like to note is that you may be looking at the nomadic shelters, saying, well, you know, nomadic has great results compared to the emergency shelters. Why is that? So when we look into that, really, the nomadic shelter takes families. Families have much more resources, they're much more successful at finding housing. And then another thing to note with the metrics here is that when a family, let's say a family of four, finds housing, that's four people that have found housing, not just one family unit. So that does play a role in the figures you're seeing, so I just wanted to point that out. So to summarize the exit data, you know, most who exited the mid-placer shelters moved to a place not meant for habitation, i.e. back to homelessness, with a higher success rate in the congregate shelter as compared to MTS. And as, you know, Dr. Rob pointed out several slides ago, this is not really surprising. We know that, you know, permanent supportive housing and other housing options have higher success rates. So just want to point out that, you know, this is somewhat to be expected, that these numbers are going to be a little on the lower end.
All right. And then I'll have a few other slides just to talk about the takeaways. As we've already described, the shelters and encampments do have, you know, an important role. They provide centralized locations for unsheltered individuals, facilitating service delivery and housing support. And then in addition, you know, in addition to the individual outcomes, which I mentioned are not as strong as with some other interventions, but they can help to address community concerns such as blight, safety, public safety, and public health concerns. As far as, you know, housing sustainability, as I mentioned, according to research, that permanent supportive housing actually delivers better long-term outcomes than emergency shelter or managed encampments, and that therefore state and federal funders, and I'll add philanthropy too. We've gotten some private investment in permanent supportive housing over the years, given the superior, really strong evidence base of supporting that intervention. And Jeff mentioned the admission criteria, so, you know, again, the mid-placer shelter really does not have a formal residency requirement described in the contract, other than, you know, that utilizing HMIS, which, you know, is for our HMI, local continuum of care HMIS system, is specific for Placer, people who declare themselves in Placer County, if you will. But guests must be clean and sober upon entry, and then for the mid-placer managed encampment, similar criteria as far as residency, but no sobriety test is required on entry, and substance use is prohibited on-site. We mentioned the regional process, the emergency criteria articulated during that regional process. These were developed really for a potential South Placer Navigation Center, but the question is, could these apply, you know, apply these here to the services at the Government Center? So having comprehensive supportive services, which I think we do at the Government Center have a lot of these services in place in close proximity, but also in the regional process articulated admissions criteria, including referral-based, so only via law enforcement or designated agencies, as opposed to just people walking up, you know, showing up and walking in. Behavioral health assessment being required, but not a sobriety test, really based on people's behaviors. So if they're intoxicated and can meet certain behavioral norms, then maybe we would go ahead and serve them. And then a regional residency priority, so priority for individuals with at least one year of regional residency, not just in the county, but kind of, you know, the South Placer was saying, we really want, we only want to be serving people who are coming from our South Placer region for a South Placer Navigation Center. And then short-term housing and services available for those with less than one year to try to move them on to, you know, where they're coming from, but giving them some services and supports. Exclusion criteria, actually very similar to what we see at the Government Center, but length of stay, a standard limit that was articulated of 180 days, which is certainly not something that we have in place right now. 180 days, but with some flexibility for individuals who are needing more time to stabilize and locate housing, particularly given we have limited housing resources. So I just present maybe the staff assessment from the HHS's, you know, the state and federal funded programs on permanent supportive housing, just to say that our, we do hope we're successful on the latest, you know, Home Key Plus application, which has been submitted, but we also are anticipating future rounds of both Home Key and other, maybe other funding for permanent supportive housing. And so we do intend to have another competitive procurement process involving key stakeholders, including our cities once again, as they've been in the past when we do those permanent supportive housing, you know, ask for another contract. I think there was mentioned before in public comment, we actually did have a competitive procurement for all the Home Key projects, but I think it's due for another round. So if we have new Home Key projects to do a competitive, yet another competitive procurement. And when we do that, that's an opportunity to include pay-for-performance metrics. And so, by the way, pay-for-performance is not only hard for me to say, but it's something that increasingly, you know, in healthcare funding, has been with it for a long time. So when I, you know, work in the healthcare sector and the private sector, increasingly your doctors and hospitals are being paid not just on, you know, the number of services provided, but on how they're doing, based on their outcomes. And so increasingly, the majority of the healthcare dollar coming from the federal government is being for actually performance and not just for utilization. And so this, under Whole Person Care, which our target population was people experiencing homelessness, actually chronic homelessness, who had lots of other complicating factors that were causing their health conditions to be very expensive, but also having poor outcomes, we were paid pay-for-performance. And we actually, as a county, did really well. We met 100% of our pay-for-performance metrics. So we're excited about, and all of our HHS contracts beginning to include more pay-for-performance metrics, including in permanent supportive housing. So that might include timely completion of capital projects, remaining under budget on capital projects, following the citing criteria that were developed during the Regional Homelessness Response Project. And again, like having, you know, key, some metrics around key stakeholder satisfaction. So, and then I'll hand off to Jeff.
Yeah. So to continue where Dr. Rob left off, so staff assessment for the shelter contracts, you know, we, in the two years that we've had these contracts, we've not found any evidence of fraud or misconduct or any contractual issues. These contracts also came about in a competitive procurement process in 2023. And during that time, we've identified opportunities to strengthen these contracts and continue working with the vendor to, you know, have the best outcomes for our guests who are in those shelters. Some of these metrics, as Rob had mentioned before, would be around residency requirements, length of stay limits, and improving exit results, as well as increased communication with stakeholders, neighborhoods nearby, et cetera. All right. So to get to the recommendations, so recommendation number one from staff, the mid-placer shelter contracts allow for two two-year extensions if the contractor has been in compliance with the contract. Given the offer mentioned, we would ask that the board direct staff to initiate negotiations for a new or amended contract with our current service provider for mid-placer shelters to include negotiation on administrations and exit criteria and program requirements in the shelters to enhance the services that the guests in our shelters receive. Number two, we recommend that the board direct staff to participate in regional efforts to address countywide homelessness by identifying opportunities to enhance programs and continue participation in regional meetings, such as the local government advisory committee, continuum of care, et cetera, to identify sites for additional shelter and/or permanent supportive housing options. And that concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much, gentlemen. I am sure my colleagues have questions. So lights, Supervisor Landon, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Rob and Jeff. I do have a few questions. Going back to, sorry, I don't have the slide numbers on here. The one, well, I can just ask you, on regional residency, does that mean regional within Placer County, or is that saying regional with that county as well?
Well, and that was in reference to the criteria that were developed. So thanks for the question. During the regional, so I'll take it, because I think it's about the regional process. And so during that process, they were really looking at a, potentially a South Placer Navigation Center. And so as part of that conversation, yes, it was saying, well, we really, if we're going to have a South Placer Navigation Center, we really want it to be not just for Placer County residents, but for people who have ties to the South Placer region. But I don't know, Jeff, you have other thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think that covers it. Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then on a question on the articulated emergency shelter criteria that you developed during those two years when you guys were meeting, the behavioral assessment, sobriety not being mandatory, was that because of the Boise ruling, or did the group just decide as a whole, regardless of what the Boise ruling would have been, they just didn't want a sobriety requirement?
Yeah. Thanks, Supervisor Landon. That one as well kind of developed, really, no, so definitely Boise was, and in the timeline, I didn't include all the different Supreme Court and Circuit Court decisions impacting that, but that was on people's mind at the time. But I think really it was more based on outcomes and looking around at other, you know, best practices. That was included in the Marbut Report to saying, having a low barrier, if you will, shelter, to serve everyone, recognizing that, you know, if those people that we don't serve because of, they're having, you know, a negative drug or alcohol test are still, you know, causing some problem, you know, having difficulties in their own recovery, but also, as we mentioned, there's impacts on the community. And so I think that was, that was the consensus among, there was a technical working group to put those criteria together, and so that was the consensus among those, is looking around and looking at other best practices, including from the Marbut Report, that maybe there's an opportunity to do that, that just doing drug and alcohol testing doesn't necessarily assure that everyone, you know, is continuing to behave appropriately. As we see, like, you know, we have, we still have lots of exits due to criminal behavior and other things, and so there was kind of thinking. And there's also a lot of expense involved in doing drug and alcohol testing, and so that was sort of the thinking at the time. And I don't know if Raul is also around for that, and Supervisor Gore and others who maybe can remember a little bit more of the thinking behind the articulated criteria.
Well, and I might just chime in. What we did find is, once you get people out of, at a site, so off the encampments out in the middle of nowhere and at a site, then they can actually get substance abuse treatment because they're stable. So it actually facilitates an opportunity for them to get treatment because there's someplace where treatment is right nearby.
Okay. Thank you. A few more questions. On the HMIS website, and I'm hoping maybe you can explain the difference between point in time and the total number, because on HMIS, it says we have 2,914 unhoused individuals. And obviously, our number, point in time, is 702. So can you explain the difference between those two numbers?
Yeah. So as I mentioned, the point in time count literally is a single night in January. Actually, they, we have two weeks after that night to kind of figure out where, you know, to count people, figure out where they are, where they were on that particular night. The HMIS data really comes from our Homeless Management Information System, and so everyone who goes through our coordinated entry system and says, yeah, I'm in Placer County, I need services related to homelessness, gets entered into there. It also sometimes needs some cleanup, so you'll see big fluctuations. It's what, 2,900 right now? But I know, by the way, we have monthly continuum of care meetings that are open to the public. There's also a committee that just focuses on the data, right? And so from time to time, that group will clean up that number, and so you'll see pretty wide fluctuations in that, depending on whether there's been a cleanup of that or not. But basically, anyone who comes in, there's also maybe some duplication of people, and so making sure someone comes in and that they, that's why we need their ID and be able to see their date of birth and kind of cross-reference that. So yeah, the number is probably closer to what's the actual number of people who experience homelessness, or at least are at risk of homelessness within the course of a year. But it's, so you'll always see that where the HMIS number is much larger than the actual point in time count. That's consistent across other jurisdictions as well.
Okay. And so the 19-ish million between state and federal funding and county funding, is that divided between that 2,900 then, or is it divided between the 702?
Yeah, I would say that, and I want to have, Raul has maybe some more to add on this, but yeah, the, especially in the state and federal dollars bucket, I'd say for the county general fund, it's largely focused on, you know, emergency shelter is not even on all those 702. We're serving a subsection of those folks, although there are some people, you know, who come and go, right? So the number of unique people is larger than just the, you know, 150 beds or so that are funded here at the Government Center, through County General Fund. But then, yeah, for the larger scope, it's not just those who are in HMIS, but also potentially others who are at risk of homelessness, who are served by that, you know, 17 million or so. But yeah, Raul.
Also, just one, another comment on the point in time count. This is just around the theme of coordination and collaboration. So in addition to the regional process that involved all of the cities in mid and South Placer, sort of developing criteria, not just housing citing criteria that had formed placement of permanent supportive housing, but also on emergency housing entrance criteria, there's been a lot of coordination through the, through HIRCs, through the continuum of care, that also brings together law enforcement from each of the the continuum of care, that also brings together law enforcement from each of the jurisdictions as well, in addition to community-based partners and city staff to identify encampments. And so I think, whereas, you know, I can't speak to other counties, but it seems as if the coordination and the collaboration on the count is really strong. And so when folks, for example, show up to an encampment, a possible encampment, and folks aren't there, there's sometimes a bit of a surprise. And so there's a follow-up that happens, which is why the 10-day period afterwards is really important, and folks can go back and see, and often find, oh yeah, this is where that person tends, tends to live. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think that's all my questions for now. I did want to just kind of say a couple comments before we go to public comment. I, so I wanted to note, I, I made a request, obviously, to bring this forward a few months ago, and that was on the heels of a situation that happened in Lincoln with TGI acquiring a building for medical respite. And I think unfortunately, that the information that I was given at the time was not the same as what I discovered on the grant application afterwards. And that's the part that's really the most disturbing to me. I actually really appreciate the work that TGI does, and I see some TGI staff here in the audience, and I appreciate them. And I feel bad that they're kind of stuck in the crossfire of some of this other stuff that's going on. But I think, I don't know whether discrepancies were by omission or commission at this point. I just know there are discrepancies. And that is of utmost concern to me, because integrity and trust is probably the number one thing. And I want to know that I can trust a vendor, or a contractor, or a person that I'm engaging with to be able to operate with the highest level of ethics. And I think I, I'll, I have more comments to make after public comment, and we'll probably likely have more questions, but I just wanted to at least put that out there so people knew why we were, why we were having this conversation, and, and those were kind of my, the thoughts and impetus for why. So I think that's it for now.
Thank you, appreciate that Supervisor Landon. So we will open this up to public comment.
I had a couple, I was just waiting for her to finish.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind, Madam Chair.
No, go ahead.
A couple of questions. First off, Rob, right at the beginning, you talked about the Marbit study. And since I came to the county after the Marbit study, I just wanted to make sure we were clear who Dr. Marbit was and which administration he served under.
Yeah.
For the record, because I think that's important for the audience.
Yeah, thanks Supervisor Gustafson. So sorry, I tried to go through the history a little too fast. But yeah, so Dr. Robert Marbit actually was a former vice mayor of the city of San Antonio, who got into, you know, homelessness, I think, you know, got very interested in this during his term. There, where they put together in the city of San Antonio, the Haven for Hope, so a campus model addressing homelessness. And then, actually, I, he, he worked around the country doing consulting after his term in San Antonio, including with us when I was in Fresno County. So I've known him for, for a long time. And yeah, he, in 2018 or 2019, became the executive director of the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness. I believe, I just say the homelessness czar, but that's the official title in the, the Trump administration.
Thank you, thank you for that. Couple of other questions. Can we, if you don't mind, you read off a lot of statistics on the homeless prevention programs. Could you just get that to us later?
Absolutely.
I find it really informative to our public on that as well. I had a question, and this might be more for Jeff, on the call volumes. Do we have numbers on the call volumes before we established the mobile temporary shelter when we just had the camp encampment all over the government camp?
Yeah, I don't have those on me available right now, but it's, I'm sure it's something that I could work with the sheriff's office to, to provide.
I, I think that's really important. I know we, as a county ourselves, experienced thefts, damage to vehicles, other, many other calls, and I have heard, in general, the calls that the public surrounding the facility feel much better and safer. But if we don't have the before and after, we're just looking at what the call volume is now, that may not be fully transparent to the public. I continue to hear, as I've asked you many times, on who are the folks that we're housing? Where are they from? And I know that there's only the two-week requirement for, to be collecting some of the benefits from the state. But there are a number of individuals that have some level of probation in their background. Do we know their last residence? Because I feel like the North Auburn community, the Auburn community feels that, that we have a, we're housing a lot of people that aren't necessarily from this vicinity, in this mid-placer shelter.
Yeah, I can just touch on like criminal history. I mean, you know, we do have two deputy probationers that are, sorry, probation officers, who are part of the homeless liaison team that do communicate with adjacent counties. If somebody is on probation and at the, one of the shelters, it is a requirement that you report to a probation officer where your residence is, so that would be considered their residence. And I know that probation, you know, communicates with those, those people while that transfer's going through. Beyond that, you know, I'm not sure how, you know, how much information we could really collect from a, from a guest that's trying to get into the shelter on previous criminal history, or, you know, outstanding, you know, charges from other jurisdictions. Rob, I don't know if you have anything to add on, on just the clientele piece?
Yeah, well, I think for emergency shelter, again, because it actually doesn't get state and federal dollars, and so I think there's some flexibility there, and I think that was articulated even during the regional process, is to say, well, maybe there's, you know, some people who are, who end up in Placer County for a short period of time, that maybe they get some, some level of services. And I know there were stakeholders, part of that, who really felt that was important to provide some level of services for a short period of time, but for more lengthy services to really focus on, on people who've been in Placer County and had real strong, strong ties, not just to the county, but again, as I mentioned, kind of the regional, regional ties. The one thing I'll say, as relates to the HHS programs, kind of the, the right, right pie pieces, those programs do get state and federal dollars and have, you know, depending on what the program is, different residency requirements for permanent supportive housing. I know we, we articulated that, and there's a, a whole set of frequently asked questions on the, the website around permanent supportive housing. But there, you know, the, you know, those people have to go through our, you know, off of the by-name list, through our coordinated entry system, and generally to have, have subsidies to qualify, most of them have more lengthy Placer County residency, are on Medi-Cal here for a while, until they can develop, you know, to, to qualify for the subsidies necessary to support the permanent supportive housing. So it depends on the program, I guess, is the, the answer, but for emergency shelter with no state and federal dollars, we have more flexibility on, on those residency criteria.
Okay, and I'm sure we're going to hear more from the public, and I'll have more questions. But one final one is, in, in the expenditures and, and discussion, the, the task force, the, the homeless task force went on to make some decisions that we would deal with this on a distributed basis. And I just would like to see those reports of what the various cities are doing as well, because we, we are showing all the county programs, but I'd like to also see what the cities' efforts are in these various arenas, so, for future, not immediately, not today. But as we look at this, I think it's important to put it in context of what is being done countywide on these programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Jones.
Yeah, a little clarification. Back to this chart here. Where did you say the funds come for specifically respite care, as opposed to emergency shelters?
Yes, I'll, I think I can handle that. So for medical respite, it's, it's actually not on there, right? So that's not, no longer a county responsibility, so those funds are going through the, the Medi-Cal managed care plan. So that won't, isn't part, that we were asked kind of to, to catalog what Placer County's expenditures are, and Placer County doesn't have expenditures for medical respite, because Placer County no longer has anything to do with, with medical respite in Lincoln or anywhere else, so.
Okay, so it, I believe you said that it came out of the, the state and federal funding?
It did, it did. Under whole-person care, when, when Placer County did have a role in medical respite and, and had contracts for medical respite, then yes, and it was, we didn't go through this exercise back, back then, but probably we would have put it in under that, that bundle along with, because really, a lot of whole-person care, the, the biggest part was that care coordination bundle, which would have gone in that intensive case management. So I might have to, you know, see, you know, see if anyone disagrees, but probably we would have put it there in that intensive case management, medical respite, the medical respite would have gone, gone there. But yeah.
Right, so the respite care facility that we have currently in Auburn, do you know who funds that?
I, I don't, I know the hospitals also fund it, so even, even prior to whole-person care, Kaiser and Sutter and some of the other hospitals, because it really kept, helped give them a place for people experiencing homelessness who show up in the hospital and who, who aren't sick enough to need to stay in the hospital, but, you know, can't, don't really have a safe place to go. And so that, that, so the hospitals were funding it, the managed care plans now also fund those, so it's really lots of, but it's the healthcare delivery sector as opposed to the county that funds those services.
But we don't fund the respite care?
Not at all.
So then we don't do the contract for the respite care?
Not at all.
Okay, and then my other question regarding writing a grant. When you write a grant for some state or federal funding, do you just say specifically, you know, narrowly, this is going to be for respite care and, and for so many beds? Or are our grants written in a way that you throw everything in, including the kitchen sink, in the hopes that you win that contract, that grant?
I think, you know, both, both, you know, it's not, grants are just, aren't just for HHS, but I'll, I'll answer, because I think in general, and not, not always the most satisfying answer is, it depends, depends on the grant, because often the grants are very prescribed, right? Especially from the feds, they, you don't really have any flexibility, like this is what you get. And sometimes it's not even, we don't have to write the grant, there's an allocation that says, you know, this is going to the counties, and this is exactly what this is for. But sometimes there is some flexibility. So I mentioned whole-person care, where we got a team together, and I remember, you know, you know, the, the late nights of figuring out, because this was new, and what do we want to come up, and an opportunity to innovate and, and create. So it really, it really depends on, on the grant. Like, the, the biggest one recently is around Home Key, where we got to, you know, and, and working with a vendor, right, who actually does a lot of that, thinking about what, what might work. So yeah, I guess unfortunately, the answer is, it, it depends upon the grant, but sometimes it's very prescribed, that it has to be exactly like this, and sometimes there's more flexibility. But I don't know, Jeff, you have other thoughts?
No, I was just going to use the Home Key example too. I mean, I think we could look to that. We, we can take Home Key funds, you know, if we were awarded that grant, and then use it for respite or shelters or anything like that. It's very specific, the, you know, very detailed to, to what that's going towards.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll have more questions later too, after the public.
Right, thank you for your questions. We will open this up to the public, and I would request this. So I'd like you to line up, you get no more than three minutes. And I would like, if you, if you want to just say, I agree with this person, that would be helpful. And any questions that are posed, we will not answer them, we will wait until public comment is ended, and then we will answer questions. So with that, I would invite the public to come up and make a comment or ask a question. And please stand in line, otherwise we'll be here for a lot longer. Okay, come on up, thank you.
Hi, my name's Nellie Collins. I want to start by saying, as board supervisors, it should be your priority to be transparent and be careful not to engage in behaviors that may show a perceived conflict of interest. Conflicts of interest greatly damage trust the public has in its elected officials. For example, public records show Suzanne Jones in 2023 and 2024 received campaign contributions from the wife of TGI CEO. In '23 and '24, Cindy Gustafson, Suzanne Jones, received contributions from Tom Dwell, as well as Bonnie Gore in 2022. Tom Dwell's on the TGI board. Jim Holmes, a supervisor that just retired but voted to award contracts to TGI, was on the board of TGI. Supervisor Weigant, who Shanti replaced and worked for for many years, is currently serving on the board of TGI. I could go on and on. It appears to be a tangled mess of corruption. In watching past board meetings from 2023, we saw this board go against an in-depth RFP panel review and award a contract to TGI over First Step Communities, also ignoring the recommendations from a grand jury report in 2021. TGI ambushed our city with a project creating serious public safety concerns without any notice collaboration or honesty, likely funded by a fraudulent grant application. They currently have two major lawsuits against them, among many other complaints filed. People are protesting this business for their deceitful actions against our community, and their reputation is permanently damaged. It's unacceptable for a public charity to act in such a careless manner, and their board has failed to uphold their fiduciary responsibility. This boards attacked us multiple times in the local newspaper and at council meetings. They've also participated in shaming us, accusing us of spreading misinformation, and even questioning our religious beliefs on many occasions. When I questioned David Loyah, why TGI didn't consider the residents and their children's safety in Lincoln for this project, he said, how many people have you saved? They're perceived as arrogant, unprofessional, and untrustworthy. We are the residents of Placer County that you serve. They are a vendor. We demand that you do the right thing to restore trust in this board's physical responsibility. We deserve to have full transparency of how homelessness is being managed by the county and how our tax dollars are spent. An internal audit and TGI-generated data will not repair trust. This can only be done by an external audit voluntarily requested by the county. The county should also consider if these contracts are necessary to review, or necessary to renew. TGI's touted success rate numbers should be drastically decreasing every year. And if determined needed, we demand the board find a new vendor that's not in legal hot water, one that has a reputation for addressing all public safety concerns, one that's trustworthy, and that values transparent communication with elected officials, and understands that these are critical in solving problems that our communities are faced with. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have a document, just to, there's a lot of questions about if respite is needed in Placer County, and that's a great slide for you to review.
Thank you, next commenter, please.
Hi there. Hi there. I didn't think I'd be talking here, because I don't usually do this. I'm Janice Carey. I'm with Assistance League of Greater Placer. And Assistance League is a group of over 200 volunteers that have been working in Placer County since 1987. About 2,000, we started looking at our programs, we have 13 different programs. And we asked our members where they felt the need was and what we were missing, and they came up with the idea that we needed to work on homeless. And so we dropped a program, we dropped a feel-good program, which was giving teddy bears to people in the hospitals, because we found out most kids had teddy bears in hospitals. But, and we got into dealing with the homeless. And we kind of stepped in this, trying to figure out where we needed to go and who we needed to work with. One of the first people we worked with or went to to talk about homelessness was the Gathering Inn. And to find out what they did and how they work and what we could do, what our volunteers could do. And we started with a meal program, working on their meal program in 2000, October of 2000. And where we were serving, where we provided the food, our members cooked the food and provided the food, 200 meals a month. And, and it was very positive, because we got to meet the people, the people that, at the Gathering Inn appreciated it. The clients at the Gathering Inn appreciated it. And it was a winning proposition, I think, for both of us. Well, then came March of 2091, and COVID hit. And then it became more important to be able to provide, when everything closed down, we were able to work with these, we found a way to keep providing meals to COVID. And not, I, I won't tell you, it was just us. They have a lot of different organizations working together, providing meals to the people in need. Well, since that, we've come out, and we're doing well, and we're now serving, they brought in the other camp, so instead of feeding 200, or now three, feeding 320 a month. But what we found out, like, some of our own members said, you know, should we really be working with them? Are we enabling their clients? Or are we making a difference? And what we found out was that 38% of the people that were in the, the camp 38% of the people that were in the camp last year have found housing and jobs. So what it meant to me, because we didn't want to just enable, we wanted to see these people become better, become community members, useful.
Janice, can you wrap it up, please?
Yeah, I can. And so what we did, we found out that this is happening. We are working more with them, because we find out we do get results. And it's making our county a better place. So I'll just be quiet with that.
Thank you.
But from our experiences, and if anyone wants to talk anymore, you can find me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, come on up, and then if anyone wants to stand up behind Jennifer to comment, please do. Thank you.
Hi, good morning, Jennifer, Placer County. I just have, like, kind of just a, maybe a little off topic, but as we've seen the distribution of people losing homes through California, especially with the wildfires that just happened, and with the 2028 Olympics coming up, what I've been seeing in LA is they're just dropping concrete blocks all over the sidewalks, so people can no longer sleep there. And I'm just wondering, for seeing an uptick in people migrating towards our area, and do we see that as a possibility over the next year or two, as the Olympics are coming as well, and with all the housing that's been lost? Because many people may try and get apartments and new jobs, because probably a lot of people's jobs and businesses were lost, too. And so more people may be closer to homelessness now than we had before in the state. And so I'm just not sure if we're going to be having some kind of inundations coming, and are we prepared for something like that? And then what happens with people, too, when they don't meet our requirements or we're full? Where do they go, and how is that handled? Because we may see more of that. Are we wanting to really expand our program more and more for having people coming from all different areas, landing here? And I think that's what a lot of citizens are concerned about. And I think we can see a possible expansion coming, based on the pattern of what's going on in our state, and a lot of people not being able to afford to live in their homes that they lived in for years and years, especially seniors and such. So I'm just curious if we're, we're planning ahead? Are we planning to grow? What happens to the people that aren't able to go into our programs? And do we see a trend that's going to be increasing because of the fires and because of the Olympics coming? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again, board. I was not planning on speaking on this, but since I am here, I might as well. A couple things I've kind of, you know, been in my heart, I really want to address this. We're seeing the homeless becoming an industry. It really is. And no matter how many grants, no how, how many programs, one aspect that we're seeing that the county or HHS will never, ever be able to address, and that is the spiritual element of the homeless. And I look back, the churches were heavily involved in dealing with the homeless. They would build relationships with the homeless. I used to be part of some of these teams that would, that would go out and build relationships with these homeless. And we saw major results, because we were able to address an element. And that is the spiritual element that no county, agency, government will ever be able to address. And I don't know if it's possible, but that is something I would like to see, because when COVID came, came on, the churches kind of took a backseat. And then the county came on board and, and started to address these issues. I would like to see the church more and more incorporated into this, because I think it is going to bridge that gap and, and bring a element of healing that cannot be addressed elsewhere. And just like, you know, I believe TGI started off as a great organization. I remember them coming to our church, speaking to our church, and, and we would partner with them. But once they started to veer from that and take the money, you know, they were no longer beholden to their mission statement, you know, which they were rooted in Christ. Now they're beholden to the county and to the state of which the funding is coming from. So I believe they have totally lost their mission along this way. So that is something I would like to see, you know, may have some disagreement in the room, and I'm, and I'm more than happy to sit and have a discussion afterwards. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Sir, come on up.
Hi, my name's Patrick Notter. And a couple months ago, I met with you guys, and I told about our Rotary Club's multi-club grant. And following me will be some other members of the Rotary Clubs, who are going to share their experience with the Gathering Inn and our multi-club grant. We're wrapping up that project, and we're now, we're starting for a 2526 Rotary Multi-Club Grant. In this, in this case, we're going to have the four or five clubs of Rotary, but we're also going to have participation from the Rotary Club of Lincoln, the Rotary Club of Rockland, the Rotary Club of Granite Bay. This will be a Placer County-wide Rotary Club Multi-Club Grant, and we'll have a different business fishery. But we'll be back next time to give you some more positive news about what Rotary Clubs and other civic groups are doing in support of the county, in support of Health and Human Services. We want to continue to give you positive updates. And then I also wanted personally to thank Cindy Gustafson, Bridgette, and Sophie for coming out on the 29th of January and doing a plaque presentation for our group, but also participating in a tour that we went with, that we had at the Gathering Inn of both the multi, the concrete shelter and the temporary charity shelter. But I was mostly impressed with the five or 10 minutes that Nick Goling shared with us, what the, what the case managers are doing. And I'm here to advocate for the staff of Gabe Starkey and Nicole Fernandez, the staff, the people of, those folks that are working for the Gathering Inn, those are the people I'm advocating for. So regardless of what we have on the executive side and everything that's sort of going on at your level, I really want to make an advocacy for those folks that are on the front lines, that are dealing with our homeless program. So in that case, I want to thank you guys for our support, and we'll probably see more folks talking about what we did for the Gathering Inn. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else in the room? And anybody else, please stand up behind her. That would be really much appreciated. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Nancy Gabriel, and I'm also a resident of the City of Lincoln. We love our neighborhood, we love the community, and we are very thankful for all that you do here. One thing we do have an issue is the location of it. And I'm sure you've heard of how the proximity of this facility is going to be, very close to the high schools, the middle school, and so on. So a couple questions that I do have, and just to put it out, maybe you can answer some of these. Are you all aware that the crisis that the county will be faced with TGI in Lincoln, if it is allowed to open? What are you going to do with the 892 low-barrier homeless people that walk out of TGI's doors each year? They won't stay in Lincoln. They will, will they head for a bigger city? 110-bed capacity, average stay 45 days, equals 892 a year. Only a small fraction would be from Placer County. But all will be established in Placer County, and will need shelter, housing of some kind, right? Are there currently any shelters open or opening? Where will all these 890 people go? Will they be left to the streets of the City of Lincoln? Will they be exposing all our children that may be on drugs to this mess? I've seen it happen in Roseville. You know, in that direct neighborhood, that community of our kids, it shouldn't be there. It just shouldn't be there. Maybe TGI should have shared their plan with the county to prepare you for the shelters they will need to be built to house all these homeless people. Some say the size facility was needed here. We have 360 unsheltered in all of Placer County. 700 is what I'm hearing. I'm not sure if that's really accurate. Why would we need this, and how could we sustain it? Of the 360, how many even qualify for respite care? Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Gary.
Gary Mappa, Applegate. I thank you for your presentation. I think it was brilliant, well-done, meaningful. Before I get into any comments, I don't recall if the Respite Center was an agenda item. And I believe if it was an agenda item, I missed it. I thought I came in on time, and I'm pretty sure I did. So I would ask that if it's not an agenda item, it should have been on public comments at the beginning of the meeting, so I wouldn't have to listen to anything that's outside of the agenda item, which is where we are today with the shelter and what's going on. And I agree totally that we should always have the opportunity to audit anything that's going on with the county, whether it's homeless shelters, roads, transportation, stuff that I'm paying for that supports Highway 65. So I could complain all day long about where's the money going? Yeah, I'd like to see an audit. But at the end of the day, there's a practical purpose for what we're doing, and you have to make sacrifices for different things. Comment earlier, and I would like to encourage the gentleman that was suggesting that religion be put back into the homeless perspective. I don't know, separation of state and church is one thing. But I would invite you, sir, to attend the meetings that I hold once a month with the Gathering Inn, Probation, Placer County, and Placer People of Faith Together. You would enjoy how much we're doing to stimulate housing, which at the end of the day is probably one of the biggest reasons we've got people that are scattered pilgrims. There's no place to go. The Gathering Inn is doing a great job. Months ago, when we had an opportunity to support the Gathering Inn, and perhaps have kept First Step as the other managing partner, the board chose not to. I was in disagreement, but I accepted it, and I made the best of the Gathering Inn doing the great job that they're doing. So I'm the first one that believes you should have that type of competition. But the Gathering Inn's doing a good job, and I support them. So if anybody would like to know more about housing, maybe we should talk about putting the Advisory Housing Task Force back into operation. The short time that we had it going, we were able to generate over 400 homes. We need to breathe new life into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Sir, come on up.
Good morning. My name is Ken Snyder. I am a Placer County resident, and I'm kind of here in support of a number of other Placer County residents that have been working with the Gathering Inn. About five years ago, we, as a group, decided to try and give something back to the community. We wanted to be a part of it. And we looked at different organizations, and how to best do that. We selected the Gathering Inn and have been providing meals there for the past five years. It's a very loose number, but by my estimate, it's about 36,000 meals provided over that timeframe. And it's 100% volunteer. We get almost all of our donations from Placer County residents. And we created a small nonprofit, just to try to facilitate this. So we are very careful about how our money gets used, and our donors care about that. We're very happy with the Gathering Inn, and we are thrilled to continue our support for them. We have volunteers that prepare the meals and serve the meals sometimes, a couple times a month. And there are a few folks out there that are willing volunteers, but no longer had the financial ability to do it. So now we fund four additional meals a month for those people, and they provide the volunteers. So I would just say, I have found them to be extraordinary to work with. I have enjoyed the experience in meeting the residents there, and the mission that they're, that they're trying to drive. And I think that the folks that are part of my nonprofit, the volunteers, have really got a great experience out of it. And we are, I guess, going to struggle to keep the size of our organization a little bit below the thresholds. I guess we're having too much success. So people believe in what they're doing, and I happen to be a strong supporter. And I think your Placer County folks are actually stepping up in a big way and providing funds through nonprofits like, like ours that continue to support this mission. So that's it. I'll give you back a couple of seconds.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Chair Gore, members of the Board of Supervisors, and of the staff. My name's John Donlevy. I live in Auburn, and I'm here to talk about the Rotary Partnership with TGI. First off, I'd like to express that I think Placer County is very blessed by all of your service. You have an amazing staff. The TGI, they bring stability to people's lives. They represent a very integral element in transitional living. There are many steps to what goes on in dealing with people at the lowest level of the economic strata within our society. Patrick talked a little bit about the Rotary Partnership on the Stand-Up Bed Project. You have an absolutely amazing team of Rotarians that are working to vastly improve the sleeping arrangements that occur there. Rotary and the greater community work hand-in-hand with TGI. The, there's a vast array of people who do it, mostly from the private business sector. The TGI board are all some of the top business people in Placer County. And it's very easy to say that the Gathering Inn, their work and their role within the greater community represents the best of giving people a hand up versus a hand out. I'll share with you that two years ago, I left a 38-year career in local government. I know a lot about homelessness, and I, I know a lot about the concerns that people express about things. I now spend most of my time doing service projects all around the world. And I will share with you that the social construct of a government safety net doesn't exist outside of the United States. Non-governmental organizations like TGI are really at the core of providing the services. California is a completely different planet when it comes to that. Placer is greatly blessed with TGI as a non-governmental organization. They not only get some funding from you, but they work within the community, partners like Rotary and the business community. They are transitioning people's lives beyond measure and realize that the funding that you give to them is but the start of the multiplier of all of that. The reality is that nobody really likes homelessness and what it represents, but it's a reality in our community. And I just want to let you know that the Rotary Partnership with TGI has been outstanding, working with their staff and their team, working with your team on things. And we very much appreciate your support of TGI and, and the ongoing efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Come on up, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Leah. I've lived in Placer County for 55 years. I love this place, plan to live here forever. As a healthcare provider for 40 years, my concern with a lot of the homeless programs is they tend to be housing-first models. Housing-first models, if I read a lot of statistics and health, health issues and statistics from, as part of my job, and one thing with homelessness is the housing-first models just don't work. They've been tried across the country. They uniformly don't work unless they're connected to other services that target the underlying problems that causes of homelessness. Study after study, nationwide, the ones that are believable and legitimate, show that about 90% of homelessness is due to substance abuse, mental illness, or a combination of both. About 10% is due to bad luck, people's houses burned down, they have no support system, et cetera. Those are things that are addressed in a very tangible way. But 90% need to be addressed with resources and money and services that address the mental health issues that are not being treated well enough in our country, in our, in our county or our state, and the substance abuse treatment. So you can't lock people up and make them do it. So you can't lock people up and make them do it without a change in federal law, but the focus of decreasing homelessness and giving people a better quality of life and becoming functional again has to be spent on those programs, in my opinion. Housing-first does not do it. TGI is part of a housing-first, as far as I can tell, everything I've read about them. And as far as I'm concerned, and in specifics there, is housing people doesn't fix their problem. You have to fix the underlying cause, and unless the county focuses their money on that, you're never going to fix homelessness. And what I've seen with a lot of the programs in California specifically, we spend lots and lots of money on them, but nothing ever happens because they overlap and duplicate each other's services all the time. I am so supportive of all the volunteer organizations that do what they can and go out, but a lot of the programs, part of the homeless industrial complex, it gets a lot of government money, that goes into people's salaries but doesn't actually change anything. And so I'm interested in evidence-based medicine, and I'm interested in evidence-based results. So I'm not supportive, I'm very supportive of an audit, and not supportive of having services duplicated over and over in Band-Aid approaches that never change anything. So I think the county needs to allocate their money onto the right things and not just Band-Aid solutions like, you know, homeless camps.
Thank you. Ma'am, come on up.
Hello, my name is Carol Edwards. I'm a resident, excuse me, of Lincoln. I think one thing is being missed by our opposition to the TGI coming into Lincoln. Majority of us are church-going, loving, humankind people. We volunteer. I have plenty of organizations that I volunteer with, and I help people. I don't have a stake in this game as far as, I don't have any children that live by the proposed site. I don't have an elderly relative that lives across the street from this proposed site. And I think people are forgetting that our opposition isn't against helping the homeless. It's where they want to put it. It's smack dab in the middle of elementary schools, high schools, and our senior living complex right across the street. And what kind of people it's going to attract? People can come in, and they're not held accountable, and they can roam around, and I think that Lincoln itself has been doing an outstanding job on their outreach programs. They do quite a bit of outreach. We're not evil people in Lincoln. We're not against helping mankind. We're kind, loving people who just want to live in a safe environment, and we want to let our children walk down the street. We want our elderly people to walk around. I'm not saying all homeless people are evil. I'm from San Francisco. I've seen evil. I just think that the whole point of our opposition is where it's at. We would be more than happy to see it being built somewhere else. And sort of the, I was in law enforcement for 40 years. The way they're going about it seems a little fraudulent to me, not telling the truth. You know, a respite center? There's no plans for a nurse or a doctor to be on site. How could you be a respite center if you don't have healthcare people helping take care of them? You know, sliding in in the middle of the night and lying on their grant application, that makes me not trust them. So please, we're not mean people. We just don't like the way it happened and where it's being put. Thank you.
Ma'am, come on up, and if anybody else wants to speak, please stand up. Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing us to speak to you. My name is Ingrid Pearson. I grew up in Auburn, and I grew up here. I went to Placer. And until I joined Rotary, almost four years ago, I wasn't very active in the community doing things. I worked mostly in Roseville or in Sacramento. I can say that my view of Auburn has changed, and it's changed significantly. Since I moved back up here in 2013, I was overcome by all the homelessness. I mean, here on the campus at DeWitt, out in North Auburn, all the panhandling. And I can, just from a personal, just me, personal experience, the difference now with the congregate housing and the transitional housing is night and day, and I think that's I've learned so much about the Gathering Inn through our Rotary connections. We've gone to meetings, they've come to our meetings, and I was at the plaque ceremony for the bedding, the step-up beds that our Rotaries here helped to build, not just fund, but also hands-on build. And I was in that group, but by the time Friday came and my job was to be there, they were finished. So I didn't get the joy of experiencing the actual build project. And if you haven't been out to see that, what a difference it makes for the guests, the little bit of additional privacy is huge. I did, at the awards ceremony there when the plaques were given, I was part of the tour, and I hadn't been to either of the shelters before. I just heard about them and the accounting, and I was so impressed. I was impressed by the organization. I was impressed by the cleanliness. I was impressed by the clients that were there. I was impressed by the counseling centers. And I had previously heard about, you know, how the clients move through the system, that they are given counseling, they are provided with medical care, they are coached, they are shown how to go out and apply for jobs. A lot of different ways, anyway, to bring them from homelessness back into the community. And that's one of the things I appreciate about what is happening now and look forward to continuing to support the Gathering Inn. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick, come on up. Last call in the chambers, because then I need to move online.
Good morning, everyone. Nick Golling, Chief Program Officer with the Gathering Inn. Just wanted to start with a little bit of a gratitude statement for the whole Placer County team. You have some fantastic departments, and there's some fantastic people here represented. Christian, we're going to miss you. Good luck in your next spot that you're moving to. Working with folks is what makes a difference for homelessness. So I wanted to just talk a little bit about a few numbers really quick. These numbers are representative of fiscal year 2324. 669, that's the number of unique individuals served at shelter programs and our current Auburn Medical Respite in Placer County. 52, that's the number of children ages 0 to 17, served. 39, that's the number of veterans served within that time period. 199, that is the number of our 448 leavers who moved to an improved housing location during that reporting period. 119, that's the number of those 199 that moved directly to permanent housing destinations. This is despite a climate where it's hard to build housing, where we're often finding ourselves, many localities struggling to meet the allocations and the goals that we set forth for low-income, very low-income, and extremely low-income housing units. I want to give a special shout-out to the staff that work at the Gathering Inn and the way they collaborate with the different teams, both public and private, in the community to make those types of miracles happen. Couple key differentiators that I think I'd like to mention about the organization is we pride ourselves in being responsive and collaborative with people in the community. We pride ourselves on our value of private partnerships, which has been outlined by some of the great folks who've been speaking here today. Philanthropy efforts locally. Last year, we were able to raise $1.1 million locally in private money. Those dollars allow us to stretch the program dollars that we have for current contracts, which I think is a great differentiator. Also wanted to mention just a couple more things. Auburn Union, Dry Creek, Forest Hill Union, Loomis Union, Placer Hills, Placer Union, Rockland Union, Roseville Joint Union, Western Placer Unified. These are some of the local school districts that are represented from the guests that we serve in our program and their children, the schools that they've attended. I think it's important for us to keep that in mind, too, as we just think about these types of programs. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Gore, and Supervisors, and Karen and Daniel. Wayne Nader. I first want to thank Rob and Raoul and all of the HHS staff for their commitment to the homeless issue. I think it's a reason why Placer County stands out in California for having real success in this area when many others are struggling. So thank you for that effort. For the past 13 years, my wife and I have lived at a very close range to the government center in North Auburn. So we've experienced the extremes of homelessness from the, I would almost call them darker days and the early times when there was just a chaotic situation in North Auburn. And the reason I'm just mentioning that is that the drastic differences, you've already heard from some others, of where we are now versus where we were there at that time. And a lot of that has to do, a real turning point was when TGI came in. We actually now started to get results of helping people actually move on, and that was something that was not happening before. I mean, there's been real success in that area, and I credit that to TGI and the HHS commitment, the commitment of the board as well, has really made this a success. And the other element of this, as you've already heard this morning, and it's incredibly impressive, and I think unique again in California, is the level of engagement from the community. You've heard from other groups already this morning about what that impact is to them personally, to go through that experience. And I think most of you have served in the kitchen at one point or another, so you know what that's like, to be able to be there and experience that up close and how that leaves you with a lasting impression of that. So I'm grateful for everything that's being done towards the homeless issue. Thank you for what you're doing as a board. Thank you, HHS, and most of all, thank you, TGI, for their commitment and engagement to addressing the homeless issue and having really great success here. I would encourage you to support both recommendations. There's no reason why you shouldn't move forward on negotiating an additional contract with TGI, none whatsoever. And I do encourage a recommendation, too, that we, as Auburn residents, feel like, yes, you're right, Supervisor Gustafen, that we share as the North Auburn a pretty heavy burden on the homeless issue, and it's time to bring that to other parts of the county. And so that's an important part of that piece of consideration, so I would encourage you to support both of these. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ma'am, come on up.
Hi, good morning. My name is Lenore Ward. I'm from Lincoln. As you can tell, I'm kind of like in opposition of TGI. I am. I have concerns about homelessness, and I'm very church-oriented, so I do believe in a lot of things that HHS is doing, TGI is doing. However, I really, really want to request that you guys pay attention to the community, pay attention to what we feel. Don't just give TGI an extra contract without going to an RFP, without doing auditing. I am a DOG. I strive for them. Our money is wasted. This government of ours is out of control, and I feel in aspects, you guys are out of control. Just because TGI is this big fluff, there are other organizations out there to provide exactly what TGI is doing. Give them a chance to provide you the information you need that might not meet and go beyond what their recommendations are. Trust your community. I have a personal experience with homelessness invading my aunt. Eighty-six years old, a homeless person came and stood on her doorstep and would not leave. She was frightened. She called for help. Next-door neighbors came. Police came. That person still refused to leave. I live just blocks from this facility to go in. I don't want to feel that way. How are they going to help people like me? Again, I'm going to ask you to please do an audit, make sure where your money, our money, is going is to the right place, and request additional people input RFPs. Don't just give it to TGI. There are other facilities out there.
Thank you. Ma'am, come on up. And she may be the last one in the room, and then we'll move online. Go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you for your service. My name is Linda Bagnell. I live in Lincoln, Sun City. I had a business in downtown Lincoln until COVID. I had homeless people sleeping on my doorstep when I showed up to work. I agree with the lovely lady from Lincoln who said that we are humanitarians. We love the people there. But I drove by the facility the other day. I had not seen it. I knew about the conflict, but I was aghast at the size of this facility and the location of this facility. If you have not been there, I sure hope to goodness you've been out there to see this building. But it is the wrong location. This is not the right place. I don't know enough about the operation TGI. I don't know enough to speak to that. But I do know about what I saw, and I was so upset by the fact that we would even consider this in this location. That's my problem with this. We want the homeless taken care of. We want them helped. We want them served, but not here. There are seniors, there are children, children! Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move to public comment online, and I'm going to strongly request that you all limit it to no more than three minutes, and if you keep going, we're going to just cut you off because you can't see me. So I appreciate your comments, those of you online, and we're going to take, you have last minute, like after this last commenter, we're not going to take any more hands up so we can move along. And with that, we're going to start with Megan. You can call them out.
Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic. Caller with telephone number 1670. Go ahead and unmute your mic. Can the caller with the number ending in 7747 unmute your mic and give your comments? Caller, are you able to unmute your Caller, are you unable, are you able to unmute your mic? Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
I think this is me.
Yes, Susan, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Susan Cullenberg. I'm a lifelong resident in Placer County. There's several things I'd like to say. Number one, the study was done in 2015. Obviously, it hasn't corrected the problem that is occurring in our countywide, let alone statewide. I'd like to know from the county and from TGI, how much money per homeless person is spent? What is the success and what is the core value of, of what you do for the homeless people? So, I agree with the woman who said home first does not work. Having been someone who was homeless and a drug addict, me, I got three hots and a cot. That's what the county used to do in the 90s. You got three hots and a cot. You got programming. You had an opportunity to get clean and sober and you were given, you were forced to have programming. You know, we have these homeless places that don't even check for drug and alcohol. And you allow people to continue to live a lifestyle that leads them to a place where they're living their worst life possible. These people need an opportunity to have choices made for them because they are unable to make choices for themselves. Not being addicts, not being homeless. You don't understand. These people will take the path of least resistance. When you provide services to them, that's all they want, which was shown in the grand jury report, as well as the nationwide study that 90% of the people just want to live the, the way they want to live. It's time for accountability, not just for people who choose to be addicts or people who have mental health issues who need treatment. It's also time for our government, including Placer County, to have accountability. This, this whole complex, this homeless complex is just a farce and funding needs to stop. And people need to be held accountable for their actions. I just, I want to encourage the county to reevaluate what they're doing and is it making a difference? Or is it just sustaining a problem because you're not using the appropriate, the appropriate actions that need to be taken to lift people out of addiction, out of mental illness, so that they can become participants in society? Otherwise, you're just enabling them. That's what it seems like the county is doing. They have funding from the county, the state, the government, from nonprofits. It's, it's just a complex that, and homelessness is getting worse.
Thanks Susan. Can you wrap up, please?
Yes. I just want to, I, I would like you to reevaluate the foundational way that you're looking at people who are on the streets. That's what I would like the county to do, not just an audit.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate your comments. Thank you, Susan.
Caller, can you unmute your mic and give your comments? Mr. Davison, are you able to unmute your mic?
I hope I am.
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Yes, good morning. There's been some great comments today. And I do, I do side with the group that is talking about getting accountability from the county and the state. I think we've been dumped on once again by the state, just like we were with the Rena Housing, that we need to provide certain X numbers of housing. So, I think we're putting a solution out there where maybe the problem isn't what we are actually anticipating. And once again, what I'm really disappointed in with our state is that our governor won't do an accounting of the $24 billion that was spent in four-year period. And he absolutely refuses to do that. And because of that, I don't think that our county should be participating and taking even more money here. I think we need to do a pause. We need to do a timeout on this and not expand it. Somebody said greatly here this morning, homeless industrial complex and putting the housing needs first. And you know what, we are getting ready to have dumped on us here as taxpayers, the fire damage because the fare plan has gone bankrupt. And apparently, that is going to be distributed to the taxpayers, not the taxpayers, but the people that have home policies. So, my wife is going to take the rest of the time here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, hi. Leslie Davison here. We tried to get on earlier and we couldn't unmute for some reason. I have a whole lot of notes here, but I think, just going off what a couple people said. One gentleman mentioned the churches coming in to help. And I think my husband and I both agree on that. There is no separation of church and state, by the way. And also, the woman who said we aren't treating the underlying cause of what the homelessness is, and that is alcohol, mental illness, or dual diagnosis. Sorry, I ran a little out of breath. We met, we were the only ones to show up at a meeting with Nick, Gabe, and Darlene. They were very nice. We had one-on-one, so it was great. And I think one of the things that we wanted to stress was you need an alcohol program. These people are going to continue to cycle through without a drug and alcohol program. 12-step programs will willingly come in to help. They don't cost anything. They will come in. They volunteer their time. So, I'm not quite understanding why TGI and Gathering Inn does not have those programs. And we did discuss that. I see my time is up. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie.
Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments. Mr. Holbrook, are you able to unmute your mic?
I think so. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Sorry about that. Once again, I switched to my phone. Hey, first off, I'd like to say, none of you were there. That Marbot study is a total farce. It's a joke. It's a perfect example of the homeless industrial complex consultants taking advantage of ignorant public agencies. Not that the members are ignorant, they just didn't know. I use ignorant in its truest sense. They, they even cut in pace and forgot to change the names of communities that they used in the past. I hate every time I hear that brought up. Also, I agree with Gary. The respite thing really wasn't an agenda item. As I understand, I think TGI owns that facility. But, but they need to be careful what they ask for. They just might get it. I'm here primarily to defend the recommendation number one for the Gathering Inn. As many of you may know or remember, the Auburn area, North Auburn, which has no supervisor that lives anywhere near us, so, and we've always kind of been the dumping ground. We have three elementary schools, more senior housing than anywhere in Lincoln, all within an eighth of a mile of the facilities that TGI runs. And I am so thankful they're there. Prior to that, we had Volunteers of America, which was definitely corrupt, lying organization. The surrounding area around the shelters was, was a crime scene. It was terrible. And then later on, once again, you guys did a sole source contract with First Step Communities bypassing county policies. I really wish I went to the grand jury on that. They wound up overcharging us and, and not providing it. There is a reason that former supervisors, Rotary, neighbors, businesses, all support the Gathering Inn. They are a true part of the community that can be trusted. They walk the talk. They deliver. As a, a longtime board member of the Auburn Area Recreation District, they've proven over and over again that they are truly a part of the community and they care about it. So, I really recommend that you go with that recommendation number one and extend the contracts in our neighborhood in North Auburn. And rest assured, Lincoln folks, TGI is not the enemy. They're good people. And, and these days, it is what it is when it comes to homeless facilities, shelters, medical and otherwise. Better to have them than anybody else. Anyway, keep smiling. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Next caller.
Caller, please unmute your mic and give your comments. Desiree, are you able to unmute your mic and give your comments? Desiree, are you able, I see you're unmuted. We still can't hear you. I'm sorry. Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Greetings again, Supervisors. Can you hear me? Because apparently that's been a problem.
Go ahead, Diane.
Yes, you can. Okay, thank you. It's Diane Weasel, Leslie from Christian Valley Park. I just want to commend all of the commenters, however, all of the proponents of TGI. I'm sorry. I, I understand your mission. You're probably, you know, full of great people, good intentions, but you messed up. TGI messed up. They wouldn't have had this much focus on them. And you all be doing this much damage control. The problem I'm hearing is all, you're tooting your horns, but you're not apologizing for the obvious things that have occurred that were not in the best interests of the Lincoln community. So, for that, I'm supportive of Lincoln putting them on notice, suing them, the mayor, and Western Unified for doing so. Now, they exercised something this county should be exercising. They should be doing legislative subpoenas for the last four years of records from all of their NPO partners dealing in the homeless industrial complex, which I think is very apropos for what's going on. Because none of us created this hyperinflation, the drugs coming across the border. That was, that's create the problem, wait for the reaction, and already have the solution and burden the rest of us. The other point I want to make is that, flipping to the comment for the, you know, whether to renew these contracts, let me just say, all of them should go out for RFP regardless. TGI has been in existence for over 20 years. They have solid partnerships and connections. And people want to keep renewing their contract. But they, we definitely just, I don't care how ingrained they are, they need to be RFPed out. So, I say audit, but do a legislative subpoena for the last four years of records all the way through COVID for all of the entities that are participating in the homeless structure. There's this cutoff point apparently about the respite. Well, that's still, are we going to be burdened with the respite cost, even though it's being funded through HHS and federal? That would be my question. And last, I want to just end with, you're saying that once these people get put into, or get jobs and are required to pay a third of their income, it's asinine to say that for even mortgage qualification anymore because their renters insurance, the property insurance, the power bill.
Thank you, Diane.
You can't ask for more than 50% or, you know, 20% to cover those. So, thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Appreciate it.
Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hello, good morning. My name is Stella Greenhouse. And I appreciate this being my first time at this meeting. I am a longtime inhabitant of the Placer County area. I grew in Folsom, but my dad had a business in, on Douglas Boulevard for most of my childhood. And I today, for the last seven years, have been an insurance agent licensed with life and health and accident. And with that, I meet with clients. My business is meeting with clients in their home. And my company I represent primarily serves retirees and the baby boomer population. That being said, this argument in my town that I live in, my city that I live in, has perked my ears because I am educated within this realm of healthcare for retirees. And I have seen it firsthand where I go into homes of many different abilities and financial demographics. And I bring this perspective to you only by video because I am working in the field. I wish I could be there in person. But I joined in on the task force conversations, not on the task force, obviously, but during AB567 when California evaluated their ability to take care of our retirees. And I have good, very good colleagues that live in Washington that dealt with the big surge of people buying our long-term care policies. And, and what my company has dealt with internally from that fluctuation. As California evaluates whether or not that's something that's we institute here, I coined it to myself last year, last fall of 2024, when they put it to the legislation, I coined it to myself that that wasn't going to help my current clients. That was a 10-year vesting period, and I'm not going to worry about what the legislation handles. But this has then surfaced here in my city. And it has made me realize that the education about what is available for assisted care is very slim. When I look at Placer County, I urge all of you that are making the decision to find out how many respite communities that we have, assisted care has a spectrum. It is not just about someone going into a facility. And if you are aware, you'll know that that spectrum has grown close to what autism is like. It's very broad of what businesses have put down in Placer County. And way we say it in our insurance businesses, we're building them on every corner because we're filling them. So, I, I tell you that in Placer County, I noticed that when I did research on this, that there was a place in Auburn that was a respite from this funding. Whether we need it in Lincoln is a decision, but it's, it's there. And if the funding stops within a few years, it's easier for a nonprofit to close down their doors than a city to do that. So, thank you, and I hope to get more involved.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please.
Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments. Grace, are you able to unmute?
Hello, my name is Grace. I am a lifetime resident of Lincoln, California. My family's been here for now five generations. I agree with the ladies in red that this is not the right location for the center. It is way too close to our elderly, way too close to our schools, of which I will have multiple children in. It just doesn't belong here. And I think that there needs to be an audit as well to figure out where this funding came from, why we didn't get any notice about it, why our taxpayers didn't get an input on it. I guess it's a grant. Maybe we need to audit all the way up to the governor's desk. And also, hearing that many of you had campaign contributions coming from TGI is a serious conflict of interest. And I think that that needs to be looked into as well as Robert Weigant, a past BOS member, is on the board at TGI. I just think that that's a huge conflict of interest. And I just want to share my opposition for myself, my family, and all of our generations that have been here for so long that we are just so against the, the location of this center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, no further comments.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for sharing your comments. Appreciate that. And we're going to close public comment, bring it back. Let's start with, if there's some questions you want to answer and clarify, we'll do that with staff first before we bring it back to my colleagues.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So, there was a comment about seeing an uptick in homelessness, I think related to the Southern California fires. That's not something that we have seen directly here at the mid-placer or nomadic shelters. I will say that, you know, part of what we're talking about here is a residency requirement, which I think really kind of ties into this question of are we going to see these populations move into our area because we have shelter move into our area because we have shelter or beds available? So that's something that, you know, staff are planning to address in these negotiations. Dr. Rob, I don't know if you have anything to add?
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. Well, just to add on the question of, you know, are we seeing an uptick in homelessness because of displacement from somewhere else? I think that's an ongoing concern. I mean, even going back to the Marbert Report is something to look at, and I know there, I mean, there are some, but it's probably, you know, a relatively small percentage of the people. And then more recently, I know the UCSF did a statewide study of homelessness. Looking at this question now, because we are using integrated, you know, the HMIS system, we can compare. And so researchers kind of looked at this, is there movement between different continuum of care in HMIS? So, in general, what they found is there are very small numbers of people who are actually getting served in multiple jurisdictions in the years that they did the study. So it's something, obviously, we continue to care about, and that's, I think, you know, looking at the residency requirement, something that was discussed, you know, a lot in the Regional Homelessness Response Project, but, you know, looking at our numbers here in Placer, even relative to others, other jurisdictions in the region, we're seeing actually our rates of homelessness continue to go down.
And so the other one that we heard was, you know, what happens to people when they can't get in the shelter? Is either at capacity, or maybe there's a residency issue with, with a guest that's trying to enter. You know, there aren't a ton of options for, for people like this. I mean, two-on-one is available, likely they could get, you know, a day, a night or two of a hotel voucher, but as far as long-term solutions to finding a shelter in Placer County, if they're at capacity, there isn't really a lot of options for them, and I don't know if you have anything to add.
And just to say, and we talked about the different, thanks, Jeff, the different parts of the continuum of care. So housing, you know, for the housing, you know, types of services, probably not a lot available, especially if we adjust the admission criteria. We continue to have, you know, the crisis levels that people can access, and I think they do. So I think the answer is lots of people show up, for instance, in the emergency departments, right? And that's a, regardless of residency, in fact, we've seen, you know, a large number of people utilizing our emergency departments from even other counties, but we don't, we don't really have any control over, you know, where people, but also our crisis services and other public safety services, et cetera, those continue to have a burden of people, even if they don't have Placer County, Placer County residency. Thanks. Maybe I'll just, while I'm talking, go ahead and address the third question that we heard articulated as far as the role of the faith community in homeless services. And actually, I think it's a very important role. And, you know, just speaking to our nomadic shelter model, I mean, that's, that was prior to 2014 really the only type of shelter, and really got lots of in-kind support from, and as was articulated here today, a lot, lots of different community-based organizations that are really tied to the community, including our faith community, that do have a real role in people's recovery and understanding, you know, the things that bring their lives meaning and purpose. And so have a huge role. It's, yes, the role of government in funding these services is, you know, that's more nuanced, I would say. But during COVID, what we, what we certainly saw was some of the ability for the faith community to support the nomadic shelter model, in particular, and other homeless services, it changed. In fact, it probably, it diminished, and, you know, Father Cliff is not here, but talking about, you know, the impact. So certain congregations are having more of a, having to take a larger role, and they're having a hard time with that. But yes, just to say, I think the faith community and other community-based organizations really have an important role in addressing not just homelessness, but other challenges that we face here that HHS helps to work on. Yes, and then the question about housing first, and how is that model, you know, complemented here locally? One, I'll say, lots of discussion about today on the emergency shelter and county general fund, so there's no, with county general fund, there's no state and federal dollars for the emergency shelter. There's, there is no housing first requirement. There are some other programs that have elements of housing first. I think that's also important to look at. What do we mean by housing first? And there's some, some federal elements. The state has some of those elements, but I think in general, we haven't had any problem with our local model, for instance, for permanent supportive housing, which really emphasizes the supportive services, and we continue to get funded. So I think our current model and how we've been implementing programs like permanent supportive housing seems to not run afoul of the housing first police if one exists. And so that's, that's something. But I know an ongoing concern about, about that model as it applies to different programs, but for emergency shelter in particular, that's not, not something, you know, as we're, it's all local funds, county general fund supporting that, it's not something that we have to contend with. I don't know, Jeff, anything else on housing first?
No, that's all. So on the next one, one of the comments we heard was, you know, what is the county spending per, you know, person who takes advantage of these services? That's very hard to, I mean, if we, if the board direction was to find a number, we could do that. However, there's a large swath of, you know, what services are provided. You know, we have, there's clients who maybe stay a week in a shelter, and then move on to housing with a relative or something like that. And then we have the opposite. We have, you know, there's clients who, for years, are involved in services through HHS and wraparound services, and move on to, you know, federal state-in-funded housing options. So, you know, I have some metrics for like cost per night, per bed for the, for the Mid Placer shelters. So I can just note that for the mobile temporary shelter, average cost per night, per bed is about $83.73, and for the congregate shelter, it's $43.19. So just to give you an idea of what, what those contracts provide and what that cost per night is, however, if we're talking about, you know, what's spent on an individual, that number obviously is, you know, much different and would require a lot more research. I don't know if you have anything to add on that?
No, I think just the, the bigger picture of a cost per person for homeless services as, as I remember the slide where I'm talking about, you know, the, all the different range of services. So, you know, taking the 17, you know, the $17 million number, really dividing by just the number of people who are showing up in the, in the point-in-time count, or even those, you know, the 2,600 or whatever it is currently in HMIS, underestimates the number of people that are served by all those different programs. And so recognizing that there's lots of people who are at risk for homelessness, so especially the homeless prevention programs that are served. So it's difficult to kind of come up with that cost per person. It really, we have different, I think, for different programs, we can, we have those levels of analysis of kind of cost, cost per first, per person in each of those programs. And then related to that, I think we heard the question of like, what's the value of these services? Is it making a difference? Which I think is really, you know, the big, the big question. Obviously, there are some things globally we can look at, for instance, the, the rate of homelessness, and to see that at least, you know, staying steady or even coming down where in comparison to, you know, some of our, the other jurisdictions, I appreciate, yeah, there's been a lot of investment in homelessness over the last decade, an increasing level of investment. And so this idea of the question of is this making an impact or not? And so it's a challenging question to answer because we have lots of, as a scientist, lots of variables changing at the, all at the same time. But what we do know is here in Placer, we're in a better situation than many of our other, other neighbors. We mentioned some things, some investments that we have made, including, you know, like whole-person care, where we're the only county in the region to invest in those, and we believe that some of those investments have paid off. And speaking of value, you know, that the value accrues to different types of places, and that was a model I mentioned, this pay-for-performance model where we got, you know, credits for other things where, for instance, we're keeping people out of the emergency department, keeping people out of other really expensive levels of cares. And so there's some payoff there too, as far as the prevention and the, the impact on quality of life that really has some economic benefits. So those are, those are difficult to capture, but certainly, you know, having those questions about the payoff, the return on investment is something that's, that's really important. Jeff, anything?
Yeah, and the only thing I'll add is, you know, we have had interest from other jurisdictions who are in a place where Placer County was five years ago. They have encampments that are uncontrolled and causing, you know, impacts to the public and local businesses, and have reached out to us and have come up and visited our shelters and are looking at our model as, you know, kind of a model way to do this in their own jurisdiction. So when we talk about, you know, whether it makes a difference or not, or whether, you know, the return on investment, I think, you know, looking at other jurisdictions and what they're dealing with and kind of seeing our success in this realm, there is interest to copy this model as well.
One more thing neglected to mention, I mean, talk about return on investment, and some people shared their personal experience, right? And so it's important for, you know, to remember that these are, you know, the impact on people's lives, it really has, you know, sometimes a small investment can have a huge impact on, on individual lives. And so kind of keeping that in mind too, just the ability for people to recover and have a life of meaning and purpose has, certainly has a value in itself. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the response to the questions. It's, colleagues, want to weigh in? Let's have some conversation.
Sure, I'll start.
All right. Go ahead, Supervisor Demetey.
In the counts that are done, we have a plethora of homeless people, and I'm sure a very diverse reason why people are homeless, whether it's mental illness, if they were born with it, whether it was drug-induced, whether they're vets with PTSD, or people that are just unemployed and lost their homes, or people who are employed and can't afford to live in a home and are living in their vehicles out there. So do these counts take into consideration what our demographics are of who needs the help? That's my first question. Second, I wasn't here when this contract was put together. I haven't read the contract. So does this contract require a RFP before the extensions are done? Second question. Third, for the housing project that's going on in Lincoln, does that fall under the Fair Housing Amendments Act where TGI or any other company that is in the business of locating facilities for homeless or people that fall under the ADA program through the Fair Housing Act? Does that, do they have to, or does this piece of property fall under that where they don't have to disclose that? It could be, they could buy five houses in Lincoln and put them all right next door to each other and pretty much do the same thing. So does this fall into that as well? Under the Fair Housing Act of 1988?
Great. So thank you, Supervisor Demetey. Maybe I'll, I'll start because the, with the easier question, if you will, around the point-in-time count. So again, it's administered through our local continuum of care, but I am part of that, that board, Amy and Ellis, I split the Placer County seat there. So yes, there, the point-in-time count does look at a number of different factors, including demographics, and so, and jurisdiction. And so that comes out, by the way, we'll, we'll get the, the numbers hopefully later this spring for 2025, but then everyone really is looking, looks forward to the jurisdictional counts. So we get like kind of the headline numbers, but then the jurisdictional counts also have lots of the demographics, including, you know, what percentage of this count are people who are veterans, which, what, you know, what percentage is with families and are, with children, et cetera? And so, yes, that's, that's available. We can share with the board the latest, the 2024 count that has all of those demographics, but looking forward to the 2025 count. But maybe I'll, for the other question around the contract required for the RFP, I'll hand that off to Jeff.
Yeah, Supervisor. So the Mid Placer Shelter contracts do not require an RFP. An RFP was done in 2023, so just a few years ago. So our recommendation, as shown in number one, is to allow staff to negotiate for two, two-year extensions to their current contracts.
Yeah, and then on the third question, I don't think we can really speak to that, right? So the, the county doesn't really have anything to do with medical respite, and so unfortunately, I can't answer that question.
Right. I guess my, you know, looking out for the people or people who live here in Placer County that these houses already exist. They're, they're out there. They're in neighborhoods. We've already gone through this at the planning commission. So that's, I guess, was my question. Does a facility like this fall under the Fair Housing Act where really we have no jurisdiction to say yes or no, but if it's TGI or ABC Housing or whoever goes and puts a facility in these locations? So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Supervisor Landon?
Thank you. I don't have any additional questions, but I was going to just kind of go through my comments. I have them kind of separated by audit and by the RFP conversation, because I don't think there's anything in the recommendations on the audit portion. But so the, the information in the presentation was super helpful, and I think it was a really great start to that conversation. I mean, I think from a transparency and trust perspective, you know, it's something that's analyzed solely by staff and stakeholders that are engaged can be, especially nowadays, questioned. And I think having the opportunity to get an outside firm to take a look is, from a transparency perspective, I think fair. And I think I've learned over the last six months to trust but verify. And so, you know, I trust you guys, and I believe you're amazing staff, and you're great. But I also now really have lived and learned of, okay, I trust what you're saying, but I just need to verify it for my own conscience and my own well-being. So I think that while the presentation really kind of gives good metrics on outcomes and spending and service utilization, I don't think it can, I don't think it was possible for you to come today with fully capturing the indirect costs that impact the community, like emergency medical services, court costs, school costs, even the costs to each of our city jurisdictions and what they're spending. I think an outside auditor can take a more holistic approach to looking at those numbers and analyze not just the data that's presented, but the kind of broader societal and financial impacts and looking at outcomes at a deeper level than what we can internally. I think people, there's a quote that I heard that says, "People do what you inspect, not what you expect." And I think there is some validity to that, that people are more likely to really, not that I'm questioning anyone on staff or even within the TGI organization, working on the ground, doing the boots-on-the-ground work, but I think when you know there's someone that's going to check on you, even my kids, like they're, they're more likely to just do things really well when they know that someone on the outside is keeping an eye. I think I had asked the CEO about costs for an audit like this, and it sounds like wanting to delve in deep can be pretty pricey and could be upwards of $100,000. So I've thought through, you know, what, what could I do? And I know I personally have a halftime allocation that's in my district budget that I would be happy to give up and put toward this cause of hiring an outside auditor. I'm sure there are some other things in my district budget that I could cut that I would be happy to do to help contribute if cost is, is the concern moving forward. So I think those are my thoughts on the audit. I really hope that we can at least be willing to take a look and have someone on the outside just check into it and do a deeper dive on a lot of the, the kind of appetizers that we got today. On the RFP side of things, clearly there are many people in the community who support TGI. And honestly, I think I already said, like, I really appreciate the work that TGI does. I think many of you are right in that things are much better, having some things structured in place, and there are people who are care that are helping those people. And I think that part is not, I think there's a disconnect between, okay, well, there's this issue in Lincoln where they have this facility. It's not related to what's going on here. And I think for, for me, what it boils down to is, again, coming back to that integrity piece. And I know it's personal for me because I, I feel personally burned by the situation. So I know I have that filter. I understand that. But I, if the, if the person steering the ship is not someone I can trust, it makes it really difficult to trust the rest of the steps after that. I think I, I was misled into believing TGI leadership, and I am trying now to navigate and fix something that may not be fixable at this point. But I, two years ago, or almost two years ago, when the county put out the RFP, we all voted unanimously to go against the recommendation of a robust panel that did a vetting process. And first step was chosen to operate the mobile temporary shelter, or was recommended to operate the mobile shelter at that time, and TGI was recommended to continue operating the congregate shelter. And I think those of us who were here and, and voted unanimously to support TGI, I personally am burdened feeling as though we were complicit in creating a monopoly in Placer County. And I think there is great benefit in having competition and having iron, sharpening iron, and having organizations that work together for the greater good to serve this population. That is so important and that I deeply care about. And I That is so important and that I deeply care about. And I think at that time, TGI won both those contracts because they were really good at lobbying and they had relationships with so many people in the community and on the board. And I have since reached out to First Step and apologized for my decision. I personally think it was a mistake that I made. And I've also reached out to some of the staff members who were here at that time who made that recommendation and I went against it. It's not unheard of to go against a staff recommendation, but again, I will own up when I make a mistake and I feel like that was a mistake. And I really believe going out for an RFP, there's not a ton of downsides. I think staff time and for the applicant to have to go through that process again would be a lift. But at the end of the day, I really believe going out for an RFP provides an opportunity for another competitive bid to come in. And maybe TGI is the only applicant and then we are where we are. Or maybe we have the great applicant that provides an opportunity for us to have some competition in the county. I think final thoughts on the shelters. We, I went and toured St. John's in Sacramento and Acres of Hope in Auburn, which are both, they don't take any government funding, so there's not really any strings attached there. But one thing I would really love to see, now that we don't have as stringent requirements as what the Boise requirement had for us and when we put up the mobile shelter, it was meant to be temporary, which is why it was the mobile temporary shelter. And so looking forward into what we want to do, I think it would be incredible to really look into what do we want the program to look like at that site? And do we want to have a program that's like Acres of Hope or like St. John's, where you have an 18-month to two-year program where someone comes in, they have metrics that they're expected to meet, they graduate from phases, and then they get to the end and they're self-sufficient and contributing members of society, which I know, I'm sure everyone in this room wants. So that would be a conversation I would be very interested in having when we get to the conversation around the future of that mobile shelter. I think, I think that's everything I want to say. Thank you.
Supervisor Landon.
Okay. Thank you. I did have one follow-up question. I asked earlier that in future reports, we also see what the city jurisdictions are doing and include that. And now I have another request that I think important to addressing these issues is also our comparison to other jurisdictions across the state. So when we look at our dollars spent, this is a very technical and confusing arena for dollars spent to see a direct nexus to outcomes, right? If we could do that in mental health and substance abuse, what a different world this would be. But we can't and we don't. And so I think the best indicator we have is decision-makers at our county level is to look at our results, certainly our point-in-time count and the numbers of homeless we have. And that downward trend is important, but also making sure we're looking at what kind of dollars are we spending per capita to achieve that and what is working and what isn't. So I totally agree with that accountability mix. So those, that's my question on that. I want to get back on the record. Have we had any discrepancies in our current contracts? Any issues with our current contracts?
None that we're aware of for the shelter contracts.
Okay. And is anything we do today going to make a bit of difference on the respite debate on the Respite Center? Because that's not part of the county's oversight or the county contract. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then if we wanted, and your recommendation number one, it says initiate negotiations for a newer amended contract to include negotiation on admissions and exit criteria and program requirements in the shelters, correct? So if I wanted to be more specific on that, I would, as one supervisor, I would like to see that we look at the pay-for-performance metrics and consider that. There's danger in that. People manipulate numbers sometimes, you know, when there is an incentive. But I would like to see what other jurisdictions are doing and how we might do a pay-for-performance. Secondly, the limitations on the length of stay without progress, because I think I'm sympathetic that there are some people that might take longer. Some of us take longer to walk and talk and, you know, as I watch my toddlers grow, grandchildren, toddlers grow. And so I want to be sympathetic that people, as long as they're making efforts and attending programs. So I want to not be too hard and fast about an exit strategy on the temporary shelter. But I do want to see forward momentum, and I think we all do, for our accountability with our county dollars. So that, and then this issue of residency and doing our best to capture their last-known residents, permanent residents where they were raised, any other details that would help us know we're helping others. And then going back to, I think the very first speaker today talked about contributions received. Under the Levine Act in the state of California, you get to see the contributions. You also get to see when I refund those contributions. So look for the upcoming Form 700 that those contributions are returned to Mr. Dwelly, even though he's not the actual contractor. He serves as a volunteer on a board. I think for all intents and purposes, that has to and was returned because we understood this was coming forward. I am so proud of our county, and that means all the residents in our county, because we don't achieve these numbers without huge efforts from a whole variety of people. And I, often when you're up here, people go, "You, the county." No, it's "we," the county, right? We all make a difference in people's lives, for good and bad. And I look at the volunteers, the Rotary Clubs, the people, Placer People of Faith, the hundreds and hundreds of people that have volunteered services to prepare meals and to help in taking care of our fellow human beings. That's due to many of you. And I hear that, even if you're opposed to the Respite Center, I heard all of you speak in sympathy for what people are going through, and I appreciate that very much. I think it's important that we go back to our decision today is not making a decision on the Respite Center. I have heard both sides third-hand, and I'm sorry. People are imperfect. They may have said things or done things. I can't be the judge of that. What I can be the judge of is what I'm seeing up on our campus now, and that is working. And the people's lives are being improved by what's going on there. So that, I would like to see us move forward and put some of these measurements into our contracts moving forward and to work, continue to work with TGI in that aspect. And I can't speak to the other issue. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Jones.
Thank you for the good presentation. I appreciate it. I do have questions. I'm wondering, how many contracts does Placer County have regarding homeless programs?
Yeah. So I think we have, as I mentioned, we have about 700 contracts just within HHS. Which of those have a nexus to homelessness and to housing is more complicated. Actually, a lot of the programs that I described are not contracted out. Those, for instance, fall within our housing authority, other entities. So I don't have, you know, it probably depends on where I draw the line and maybe kind of following up. But specific to kind of homeless services for, you know, emergency types of services, really the ones that we're describing are the main ones. For permanent supportive housing, I mentioned, that's another big bucket. There are probably, I think, about a dozen different contracts in place. Many of them have been in place for years. So these are kind of legacy contracts, including we have deed restrictions, right, on certain houses. So I don't have an exact number for you Supervisor Jones, as far as how many, because some of them are, you know, much older and really just govern, you know, an individual site. But it's dozens of contracts that are in place related to just permanent supportive housing, because we have, you know, many sites all over the county. So I'll try to follow up and get you an exact number, or at least an exact estimate based on. But I'll say with a caveat of it depends on where we draw the line, homelessness and housing, a lot more having to do with housing.
Yeah. The reason I ask is because, for instance, some of our permanent homeless, I mean, our permanent supportive housing, for instance, the Hampton Inn, they also, those are people who used to be homeless, and we do provide services over there, mental health care services. So for me, that kind of comes under the umbrella of homeless because that's who we're serving, people who used to be. Today, it seems like we're only targeting just three contracts with TGI.
That's correct. And if I may, I just wanted to add, for instance, the behavioral health services, that's, as your board knows, that's the, we come, just almost every meeting with a number of different behavioral health services. And so people who are experiencing homelessness or those who are at risk of homelessness have, you know, they access those contracts as well. So that's why I was saying, you know, potentially all 700 could be, you know, serving some people experiencing homelessness of our contracts within HHS, but I don't think that's what you're asking for.
Right, right. So I'm just wondering regarding what we're kind of talking about here today, how does the county ensure that this contractor is performing according to their contract?
So Supervisor, there is contract oversight over these contracts. When an invoice is received, for example, that invoice is compared to the contract to ensure that it aligns with the scope, that it's within the budget. And that occurs for every invoice that we receive from the contractor.
So there are checks and balances there every time they submit something for reimbursement? There's the check and balance to make sure that it's coming, it's within performance of the contract?
Absolutely.
Do we have anything further that, where we do like little internal audits of some sort?
Yes. I mean, we have, in the contract, we have a right to audit at any time. I think we did mention in one of the slides, you know, TGI is under the Federal Audit Act. That's not our audit, but that is a, that is a form of an audit through the federal government. But yes, there are checks and balances. We can, you know, internally look at whatever we want to at any time. And TGI has been very open to that and that, to your relationship.
So my question is, so how are they doing and performing their contracts? Are they performing sufficiently? Are they, how would you, is there a grading system or how is that, how is that done?
Yeah. So, you know, as far as a grading system, I can't provide that to you today. But I would say, you know, in reviewing the contracts and seeing what's, you know, what services they're providing, they are complying with the contract 100%. There are no services right now that are not being provided, that we are paying for, or that they were contractually, you know, levied to take up.
So in other words, that doesn't sound like the county has any concerns for the performance of their contracts?
No, not at this time.
So what would cause the county to do an audit of their contracts if they're performing to their contracts? What would spur us to do an audit out of the clear blue if they're performing according to their contract?
Yeah. So I mean, anything, you know, any evidence of misconduct or fraud or any, you know, insight from our end that things maybe aren't being provided like they should be, you know, complaints that when we follow up, you know, give light to maybe some contractual issues occurring. But again, you know, we haven't seen any of that in the two years that we've managed.
So we haven't had any?
Supervisor Jones, I, thank you Jeff. I would just add on to that, that as a nonprofit organization, TGI is subject to certain other requirements from the IRS and filing Form 990s as well as, you know, some other requirements there. So if through our normal course of business, we suspect that there may be an issue there, that may instigate a review of the 990s, their financial reports that are done annually and different things like that. So it may not just be a performance-based or an invoice-based need, but like I said, if there were some concerns that we might have on those other requirements, that we would initiate a review.
I'm just trying to determine if we have any reasons anywhere to cause us to go to the expense of doing an external audit. Any ideas how much an external audit would cost us?
Yeah. I think it really depends on what that audit looks like. But as far as, you know, reasons to go to RFP, I mean, contractually, we don't have any reasons that we're coming with today why we need to go to an RFP.
Do you think it would raise eyebrows if we decided to say, go, we had already approved giving them two, two-year extensions on their contract, correct? So if we decided all of a sudden, well, we're going to put out, we're going to put out an RFP to see who else might play in the game, would that be cause for them to file suit against us for tortious interference, since we've already granted them the contract? So now we're dabbling in their financial interests without cause, if you...
Now we're dabbling in legal theories.
I know, but it's a supposition.
And I'm not, I'm not going to dabble.
No, 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 you're not, but I will.
But what I will tell you is that there is a right to terminate the contract at the end of this two-year term, which is the end of June. And I'm not sure how long it takes to do RFP, but I suspect you may run into a problem in two regards. One, as staff has said, there is no reason after two years that staff has to issue a new RFP. And two, you may not have a provider in place by the time June 30th runs around, runs, runs.
Thank you. That's, that's kind of where I was headed with it.
Supervisor Demeté. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Hold on.
No, go ahead.
Were you finished Supervisor Jones?
You want to interject on that?
No, 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 no. Go ahead.
Let me, let you finish.
Finish, go ahead.
Supervisor Demeté, then Gustafson.
Okay. So I know we just talked about auditing the costs of impacts to, you know, to the county, like in the form of first responders, you know, ambulances and all those kinds of things. But I had also wondered, what would the cost be to the county, just like when we, before we had the temporary mobile shelter, when we had just, everybody was homeless, pitching tents everywhere, the filth that it all creates. And, you know, I know we had, people were calling police and they were needing services and being taken to hospitals, et cetera, et cetera. So I think besides measuring that financial impact with what we have in the form of managed care for homeless people as opposed to no managed care, now it's just the wild, wild west. We're just going to do whatever we want to do. I think we need to compare those two as well. And I do not believe that we can be accused of forming a monopoly because we did put out an RFP, a request for proposals. And the opposition to the TGI proposal did not include, one of the things it did not include, does not include food. And we had to pay extra to feed the 50 people, the extra people in the tent where TGI, because of the churches volunteering to cook and prepare food, then that was one, a cost savings to all of us. Now, we are not paying, actually, and where we were paying is we were paying people who were providing food for our jailed inmates, they were the ones now preparing food for our TGI residents. Okay, that's how that worked with the former contract. We had had an established relationship with TGI for many, many, many years. So I just want to mention the cost, the cost to external audits, the cost to new RFPs in the form of how much of your taxpayer dollars you would like us to spend on these things. There were concerns that I noted down, so, about concerns for improved coordination of services. I'm not sure what that has to do with the facility in Lincoln. Concerns about achieving long-term success. So I think that we need to stay focused. We're talking about auditing other contracts that have no relationship outside of the fact that it's the same organization, TGI, who is the manager, whether it's going to be at the respite or whether it's going to be at the homeless shelter. That's the only common denominator here. So I don't know why we would be auditing the contracts that they're performing, the county, when we are, we have sought funding through the state for some of those programs and they are funding themselves with their, with their supporters, you know, and raising, raising funds and that sort of thing. So I'm not sure why it would be important to audit that. What relationship, what nexus does that have to the Respite Center in Lincoln? I'm not seeing any nexus there. Concerns, let me see if I can find some of the concerns about transparent, transparency and collaboration. I do believe that they are transparent and I do believe they collaborate. They collaborate with all of us by inviting us to tour their facilities and show us what's going on. They send us impact reports every month about their facilities to the Board of Supervisors. I'm sure if they don't have a website out there where they're putting this stuff on the website where everybody can see it, I mean, I'm going to assume that they do. I don't have to go to their website because they send all that information. I don't have to go to their website, because they send all that information directly to us, which doesn't give me cause for concern. I also go over there, you know, the facility, the churches, the churches do go there, and they cook. They cook and they serve those dinners. Now, at the Nomad Shelter, they still have the churches that come and take the people to their church. I don't know what kind of religious or faith services they provide when they're there with them. I do know that after COVID, the number of churches who used to provide that service dropped by, what, at least 30%, if not more. So I mean, if you want the churches more involved, I'd say, reach out to your churches and see if you can get any of those that are not involved, see if we can get them back involved again. Because, I mean, I can talk to TGI as a person, just like you can, you know? And so, I've also joined those, the churches, in going over there and cooking for those, the homeless people. I cook on the, on the fifth Wednesday of the month, because there's so rarely a fifth Monday, there's no one on the calendar for a fifth Monday. So I go over and I cook with staff, and serve those meals at the shelter. And it's amazing, you really have to go over and see for yourself what's happening. They are most grateful, all of them, thank us for the food, they thank us for cooking, they thank us for serving. After we serve, if there's food left over, we package for those that are disabled, we package for those who have jobs that are not there to eat at that moment, then we allow everybody to come, we allow everybody to come get seconds, and then after all of that, then we, as a group, we will sit down and we will eat with all of them. So I mean, we have a lot of involvement in all of these services, that, that people don't realize, that we just, we take it upon ourselves to do. So, my only question is, have, have you guys sat down with TGI to discuss all of this? And to find out, because I know you're saying that they're going to have 110 beds, and you're talking about it being a shelter, when my understanding is it's a respite, and they got money from state and fed, I don't know which, which organization, they got money for a respite, which means they cannot operate it as a shelter, they can only operate, is that correct? That's what you said, they can only operate it as a respite?
No, ma'am, sorry. Ma'am, ma'am, you are not, we are having a conversation amongst us, sorry.
Yeah. Well, no, I just want you to know, that I understand your concern. I don't think, I don't think it's what you think it's going to be, but we can get to the bottom of it. We can definitely get to the bottom of it, but I don't think we need an audit to get to the bottom of it. I mean, I'm there, I'm happy to come, I'm happy to join Shanti and come over and see you, and, and meet with you and with TGI altogether. Let's all get under the same roof and talk about it, kind of a thing. I do, I do think there's, well, that's the other thing too, is that now that you're all in, in court, now we may have to wait for court decision before we can do anything else like that. But, you know, I understand that you have concerns about what they say they're going to do, and what they are going to do. And I would be happy to join you, join Shanti, in a meeting with all of you, with TGI, and everything else like that, if it would help. Because I believe that it's going to be a respite. And I'm good with a respite, because that's what the facility was, a skilled nursing. They have a respite in Auburn, but they only have 10 beds in Auburn, and they have no room for more beds, and they turn people away all the time, because they can't service them. These are only people coming out, out of the hospital, they're being released into the hospital, but they, they cannot live, they cannot live on their own. So anyway, but that's, I just want you to know, my interest in helping you, I'm happy to come out there and be with you, join Shanti and do whatever, but, but I just don't, I don't see any legal reason, or any other reason, to, to cause an audit, or, and put out another RFP.
Thank you. All right. Supervisor Demeté, did you want to make your, did you want to add to this conversation?
No, not to that conversation. I think Karen already answered my question about having contracts amended to have RFPs, just for clarification, for maybe the general public, for us as well. I think you've answered that question on staff's recommendation. So that was my only thought, was, you know, I'm sure contracts could be amended to have RFPs, but in this situation, if, if it's recommended by staff, which is not taken into recommendation the first time when I was not here, then I would probably still stay with staff's recommendation. But in the future, if contracts could be awarded RFPs at the end of the term, before the other ones are succeeded, then I guess that's my question, if that can happen. So before the two-year extensions are awarded, would it be feasible to have an RFP after the first two years are expired?
Okay, that's not how this contract came into being.
Right.
This was based on that RFP, and that RFP awarded a contract with two-year extensions.
Right.
So the next RFP can take a look at it in a different manner. It could be one three-year period, one five-year period, I don't know. It could be a variety of things. Right now, we have the two extensions.
Okay.
What staff is recommending in terms of direction is to look at either fine-tuning the next two-year extension of each one of the shelters, or if we feel in our office that it merits, that we actually start a new contract, we will. My guess is it's going to be simply an amendment that fine-tunes the requirements of the existing contract, but we won't know until we get into that process.
Okay. That was it, thank you. That helps.
Thank you.
Ready to move forward.
Supervisor Landon?
Thanks, Ari. I'll try and go fast, I know you have to leave shortly. I, well, I can read the to leave, so I can see that this is likely not going to go the way I had hoped. But I do want to say, I really hear you guys, and I'm really sorry that it's not turning out the way that you would like, because I, I would love to be able to help you. And I, I would like to say that you're not the only ones that are concerned, there are concerns throughout all of our South Placer cities with this organization, and you're not, you're not alone. And I think it's fair to ask these questions. And to the audit question, personally, I just, it goes beyond TGI for me, it goes, it's to the whole picture. I have no idea what to say to someone when they say, how much money are we spending on homelessness? I think I can point to 19 million-ish on a slide now. But again, that doesn't cover all of the indirect costs that we are spending. And I think it's fair for taxpayers to know, and for us to be willing to dig in and spend a little bit of money to say, you know what, this is what is there. Do you guys feel like this is worth the amount of money? And if it is, great, fabulous, like, I, I would be thrilled if everything looked wonderful. I think the one piece that's missing for me with the TGI accountability piece, is we know, they give us invoices, and we provide the funding, but I don't know that what they say on the invoice, invoice is actually accurate. And I would say that about any contractor, it's not just TGI. Like, I have no way of knowing that they are actually spending the money on what they're saying is spending the money on, unless an auditor is looking at that to see. So I, I do feel strongly about the audit, and I would, of course, love to go out for an RFP, but see that that is not going to happen. I, I just want you folks to know that I do hear you. And I am sorry that it's going the way it is, but, but moving forward, if we are not going to go forward with an RFP, and we're going to continue with TGI, I would just like to know that we are, since we're using county funds, that we are being flexible and nimble with the requirements, that we are doing things better here in Placer County than what the state would require us to do. And so I would just really ask from the TGI leadership, that as you move forward, that please, I know that the state will allow you to do what happened in Lincoln, but please, just in the future, please don't do that. Please just reach out to the local community ahead of time, even if you know that that blowback is going to happen. I would rather have that conversation on the front end than do what we're doing right now. So, sorry for all that, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gustafson?
I just wanted to follow up on the audit discussion, because I don't disagree with an audit, but the issue is on performance metrics, right? It isn't, an auditor, in many people's regard, is going to look at what we've spent, did we pay it, and where the services provided. And I think that audit will be fine. The question you're having is, all of these expenditures, are they making a difference in a major societal issue, right? And some, there's going to be very different opinions, and that's when it comes back to a board, like ourselves, to set policies. And that's the challenging part about this job, right? Because how do we measure true success? So we look at, that's why I asked for, what are the other counties doing, and I, we could go at other states, what programs are out there for dollars spent to results given? And do we know? You know, my father had a career in, in corrections, in prisons, and he fought hard to have industries in prisons that would give people good-paying jobs outside of prison, but he couldn't tell you that their training would stop them from going back to crime. Recidivism was extremely high. So I, I grew up with that in my household, of how do we make changes in people? That is an extremely challenging thing, and we could spend millions of dollars and never have the, people are, we're doing research projects every day. So how do we make that difference? So I agree with you, that if there's any question on your issue, that you should be talking to Daniel, and Daniel should be talking to his staff, to make sure that contract is managed closely and carefully for results. But beyond that, we've got to look at what other areas they're doing. And I'm sorry, Bonnie, I went longer than I thought.
No, that's fine. Thank you, appreciate it, everyone. Just a couple of things, really appreciate people coming out to share your concerns and input, I really appreciate the overview. As a member of the ad hoc, for a couple of years, we really dug into this, and really worked to try to make sure jurisdictions knew what was happening, right? The situation that's happened in Lincoln is unfortunate how it came about, and it's not, it's not the issue that we're addressing right now. And so as, a couple of things, I checked with Andy Sisk, our Auditor Controller, he's recently done an audit, an internal audit of HHS, making sure that they're looking at contracts, and are the contracts being fulfilled. And that is something, I think, with TGI, that we can do. We can look at, I just heard somebody say, we have the right to audit at any time. Auditing TGI, there might be an opportunity to do the audit of the financials with TGI, I think is important. But we've done an excellent job in our county of keeping our numbers low, because of all of these efforts. I understand Supervisor Landon, the concern about, are we spending too much money? But we're tracking it, and our numbers have gone down. And if you look at the state of California, and those numbers are going up. Why? Because we are being purposeful with the dollars, we are providing services wrapped around services, we have services at the shelters, because we can manage those shelters, or our contracts can, we're providing services, we're providing behavioral health and mental health groups, and substance abuse resources, we're providing those. And that's why, although, yeah, the, the outcomes are, we would love them to be higher, but people are people, they're not always going to get it right the first time around. But we've done very well. I would agree that we need to have some better metrics in the contract with TGI. I absolutely agree, they've given us some suggestions, I think we should have performance metrics, we need to make sure residents have services there, it's not housing first, so we can make sure residents have services, and we have metrics with those services, residency requirements, absolutely. Because those are things that the ad hoc said we wanted, and we didn't put those in that contract two years ago. I don't think it's a monopoly, and I, I don't think this is a monopoly of TGI, because when the original contract came two years ago, First Step's original contract was $2.5 million higher than the Gathering Inn. The original contract was $2.5 million higher than TGIs, and our staff went back to First Step and said, you need to come back with another number. And then, TGI was 200 grand less than First Step. So there was a reason our board made a choice to go with an organization that had been working with the county, and having positive outcomes. So it hasn't been a monopoly, somebody else had an opportunity. And most contracts, you give a contract, plus a couple of years' extension, and that's what we're looking at doing here. So I think, I think we can agree that we want to have metrics and outcomes. And Daniel, you and I spoke a little bit, you had a suggestion about maybe some, an audit financially that you might be able to do with TGI, that might give some, a little bit better assurance of what's happening.
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor. I think through looking at recommendation number one, and initiating negotiations for the newer amended contract, I think in addition to capturing some of the performance metrics that the board has weighed in on today, including length of stay, pay-for-performance residency, making sure that the residents of the shelters are getting services, or have access to benefits and services, that we could take an opportunity as well to do, to, to go ahead and effect section number nine of the contract, which is the right to monitor and audit, and, and perform a more detailed review of the services that TGI is providing, per the rules of the contract, make, make sure that they're in alignment with the performance metrics of the contract, as well as any state, federal, local regulations that might apply as well. Like I mentioned earlier, IRS 990 forms, their annual audits are completed, those kinds of things as well.
And that may be at least a step towards additional transparency with that contract. I think that that would be helpful. Supervisor Jones, did you have a comment?
No, if you're done.
No, I, I am finished.
Okay, I just wanted to add, add a couple of things. It concerns me a little bit if we put time limits on them, and say that if you're not progressed by now, you're out. I, I mean, I don't know how we would handle that.
Oh, no, I'm not suggesting that.
No, no, I know you're not, I know you're not. But that's, my, my concern is just, I understand that, you know, the St. John's Shelter for Women and Children, they offer a lot more than just a homeless shelter. They, they offer everything from, they train them, they have their own restaurant, they train those women how to do everything, from bussing tables, waiting tables, hostessing, managing the, the books, and, you know, scheduling work hours, and all that kind of stuff. And so they, they have to wear uniforms, I mean, it's, it's, it's not just, it's a homeless service, more or less, it's not a homeless shelter. And that's why they do progress, they get in and they learn all those things, they train them how to write resumes, they train how to dress for success, how to interview, I mean, that's way more. That's what a campus of hope would have offered those people, something very similar to that. And that's what I like about the St. John's Shelter for Women and Children. So that's, the time, time is one of my concerns about that, that we build in some kind of a time requirement. And the other thing, too, that I wanted to mention, that, that the Gathering Inn has done, that nobody really realizes, and is not part of the contract, was with this new temporary mobile shelter, they wanted to add counseling to their program, but they needed the county to build them some kind, put some walls up, so they could have privacy, so everybody didn't hear everybody's conversation with the counselor. So that was something they initiated on their own, it wasn't part of the contract. And I think it's important that people know that, that they are moving forward, they're trying to move forward, they're trying to provide things that, that would be helpful.
Yeah. All right, so let's come back, I think I need to have somebody, well, here's the question, I need somebody to make a motion, if we do want to have TGI move, or staff move forward with a two, two-year extension, with the parameters in place, do I, do I have a motion on that?
I'll, I'll move, I'll move that we go with recommendation one.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, motion carries, thank you. I mean, you heard clearly, I think, our direction of what, things that we would like. And then, I think number two is, we didn't get to an opportunity to talk about regional efforts of additional sites. I will just state that I think it's important, as we had conversations with the ad hoc, it was very clear that all the homeless services should not only be in Auburn, and we've had conversations about Roseville and South Placer, because most of the unhoused in South Placer are in Roseville, not in other communities. And there have been conversations with the COC and the LoJack, which I think need to continue, as we look at next steps. And that's a complete different conversation.
And I'll be happy to make that recommendation, and into a motion.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay, so you heard the recommendation, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? All right, motion carries. I thank you, everyone, for the dialogue, and I, I want to make a suggestion, too. We've done a lot of work on this topic, when it comes to homelessness. I did a podcast last year, interviewing many different folks, Health and Human Services, probation, nonprofits, the sheriff's office, about this topic. If you want to learn more, feel free to check my website, because it's really challenging. And we've done... And we've done really good work as a community and as a county. And this is just hard, especially when people have differences of, of opinions. So feel free to reach out to us. With that, we, I want to make sure we do this. We have the Sheriff's Office, the DA, and the, and,
Probation.
Probation. So we need to take those now before, before we take a break for lunch. And then I will let Supervisor Landon's going to chair the rest of the meeting as we move forward. So let's go to item, item two A, and it's the Sheriff's Office. He will be, somebody will be coming from the Sheriff's Office. Thank you.
Thought they wanted to hear me speak.
Okay, do I just stay here? I can just stay here. Oh, I.
Thanks, have a good trip.
With the Sheriff's Office, Public Safety Equipment Policy Ordinance Annual Report and Approval to Acquire Additional Equipment.
Good afternoon, Honorable Members of the Board. My name is Josh Tenel. I'm the captain of, with the Sheriff's Office in charge of our Field Operations Division. I'm here today in accordance with Assembly Bill 481, Public Safety Equipment Policy, Providing the Sheriff's 2025 AB 41 Annual Report, Including an Updated Sheriff's Office General Orders, Operations 27 Policy on the Use of Military Equipment as Defined by Statute and Request for Approval to Acquire Additional Equipment as Required Under Government Code 772A. September 30th, 2021, Governor Newsom Signed AB 41 into law going into effect January 1st of 2022. AB 41 Created Government Codes 7070 to 7075 Relating to the Use of Specified Equipment by California Law Enforcement Agencies. 41 Seeks to Provide Transparency, Oversight and Opportunity for Meaningful Public Input on Decisions Regarding Whether and If So, How Specific Equipment is Acquired, Funded and Used. Placer County Sheriff's Office is in Possession of Certain Items of Equipment that Qualify as Military Equipment under 41. AB 41 Requires Law Enforcement Agencies Possessing Such Qualified Equipment Prepare a Publicly Released Written Equipment Use Policy Documenting and Covering the Inventory, Description, Purpose, Use, Acquisition, Maintenance, Physical Impacts, Procedure, Training, Oversight and Compliance Process Applicable to the Agency's Use of Such Equipment. On May 10th, 2022, Your Board Adopted an Ordinance Approving the Sheriff's Office AB 41 Public Safety Equipment Policy in accordance with Government Code Section 70 to 70, 70, 70, 75 for the Use of Specified Equipment. On June 14th, 2022, Your Board Passed a Motion of Intent to Adopt the Fiscal Year 2022 to 23 Recommended Budget, Which Included the 2022 to 23 Capital Asset Requests. As Part of This Approval, the Purchasing Manager Was Authorized to Issue Purchase Orders Exceeding $100,000. Among the Approved Item Was a Request from the Sheriff's Office for a New Lenko Bearcat, Which Was Subsequently Purchased and Delivered in June of 2024. AB 41 Requires that Law Enforcement Agencies Obtain Approval to Reauthorize the Ordinance When Planning to Acquire New Public Safety Equipment. The Sheriff's Office Request Your Board's Approval to Add the 2024 Lenko Bearcat G3 to the List of Approved Equipment. The Lenko Bearcat Is An Armored Four-Door Vehicle Built on A Commercially Available Ford F6LK, F600 Chassis With An All-Steel Armor Construction That Can Seat Up To 12 People. The Ballistic Protection Is Rifle-Rated. It Has A Single-Person Visual Cupola, Glass And Barn Doors, Emergency Lights, Hydronic RAM Upgrade With Front Mounted Receiver And A Gas Deployment System. Additionally, Law Enforcement Agencies Required to Prepare an Annual Report Within One Year Of Obtaining Governing Body Approval. This Report Is Provided For Review. Upon Your Board's Approval As Required by Government Code, The 2024 Lenko Bearcat Has Been Added to the Annual Report And The Revised Sheriff's Office General Orders Policy Manual, Operations 27, AB 41 Public Safety Equipment. So In Closing, A Vehicle Equipped With Such Safety Equipment and Capabilities, As Well As Equipment Currently Utilized By The Sheriff's Office Outlined In Our General Orders Policy That Falls Under AB 41 Will Help Maintain, If Not Increase, Public Safety Efforts For Placer County Residents and Visitors. And Thank You For Your Time And Your Continued Support. And I'd Be Glad To Entertain Any Questions The Board May Have.
Great, thank you, lightning speed, it felt like.
Tried, sorry.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, any public comment? Anyone online? All right, and then does, if someone wants to make a motion and read the action requested, since it hasn't been read in?
I will move approval. We intro, we've introduced, and they have introduced, an uncodified ordinance requesting us to waive oral reading approving the continued use of public safety equipment and adopting the updated Placer County Sheriff's Office General Orders, Operations 27 Policy Entitled AB 481 Public Safety Equipment in accordance with Government Code Sections 7070 dash 7075 for the Use of Specified Equipment. Approve the Addition of a New Item, 1 2024 Lenko Bearcat G3 to the Approved Military Equipment List In the Updated Placer County Sheriff's Office General Orders Operation 27 Policy Entitled AB 40, 481 Public Safety Equipment and Receive the Placer County Sheriff's Office 2025 AB 481 Annual Report as Required Under Government Code 7072A. I move, I move approval.
Second.
Great, moved by Supervisor Jones, seconded by Supervisor DiMattei. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Board.
We'll move to item three A, probation, Assembly Bill 481 Public Safety Equipment Policy Ordinance and Annual Report.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. I'm honored to be here before you today. I am Senior Deputy Christina Sawyer, Member of Probation Department's Professional Standards and Training Division. I am here to provide an update regarding our unmanned aerial, aerial system, UAS, often referred to as a drone, and provide a report pursuant to AB 481 as mandated by 7072A of the Government Code. The action requested this morning is to introduce an ordinance, waive oral reading, approving the continued use of public safety equipment as outlined in the probation department's Public Safety Equipment Unmanned Aerial System Operations Policy in accordance with Government Code Section 7070 dash 7075. Although we have not used the UAS for field operations this past year, it was used for community service outreach events. We would like to continue to use the UAS as an option to meet future needs. Therefore, we are requesting that your board waive oral reading and approve the continued use of our public safety equipment, UAS, in accordance with Government Code 7070 through 7075. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, and also receive the Placer County Probation Department's 2024 AB 481 Annual Report as Required Under Government Code 7072A. All right, any questions? Okay, anyone in the public? Anyone online? All right, do I have my motion?
I'll move, move approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Gustafson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
All right, moving to four A, District Attorney, Assembly Bill 481 Public Safety Equipment Policy Ordinance and Annual Update. Report, sorry.
Afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Thank you for having me. I'm Lieutenant Vince Dudo with Placer County DA's Office Investigations Unit. I'm here on behalf of our District Attorney, Morgan Geier, and our Chief Investigator, Mary Green. We're here today, we're asking for two actions. We're asking that the board introduce an uncodified ordinance, waive oral reading, approving the continued use of our public safety equipment, and adopt our updated District Attorney's Policy 706, quote, military equipment in accordance with Government Code Sections 770 through 775 for the use of that specified equipment. We're also asking the board to receive the Placer County District Attorney's Office 2025 AB 481 Annual Report as Required Under Government Code Section 7072 Subsection A. The background on this is in 2022, this board adopted an ordinance approving our equipment we currently have and the use of that specified equipment. We made one change to a piece of our equipment this year and our new policy updates that change. Other than that, we don't have any other changes to report. We're not requesting any new equipment. And I'm here to answer any questions that the board would have.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Anyone in the audience? Anyone online? All right, motion?
Motion, motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Gustafson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Item five A, County Executive, Placer County Charter Review Committee. Just kidding, I am just kidding. Sure, would you guys like to go to close session and then come back?
There's people here, why don't we just run?
I mean, if you guys are okay, I'm okay, I'm feeling it.
I would run through it.
Okay, are you all okay? Okay, all right, then we will, we'll go ahead and move on to item five A, County Executive, Placer County Charter Review Committee.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Landon, Supervisor Ben Mills with the County Executive Office. I am presenting on item five A, the Placer County Charter Review Committee. The County Charter, adopted by voters in 1980, is a government document that guides the structures, duties and responsibilities of elected and appointed officials and allows for greater flexibility with local decision-making. The Charter includes a provision for review and assessment of the Charter every five years through a Charter Review Committee. In July of last year, your board approved the composition of the committee to consist of seven members, one member from each supervisory district and two at-large appointments. The application period was open for 65 days. The Clerk of the Board posted the vacancies on the county website and our Public Information Office sent out newsletters, social media posts and emails. A total of 19 applications were received and the applicants have been notified of today's meeting. Today's request is to appoint your individual district representatives and to select two at-large members from the remaining application pool. Page two of the board memo lists the individuals eligible for the at-large seats and Attachment A contains their applications. One item to note, Sidney Hamrin has requested to be removed from the at-large eligible list. Once the committee members have been appointed, I'll be coordinating with the Clerk of the Board and polling the members' schedules for eligible dates for the first Charter Review Committee meeting. A minimum of two public meetings are required and any recommendations from the committee would come back to your board and ultimately to the voters in the form of a ballot measure. And with that, I will read the requested actions into the record. Appoint the following district representatives to the Charter Review Committee. Loretta Walker, representing District One. Nathan Herzog, representing District Two. Chris Janzen, representing District Three. Dan Woodward, representing District Four. And Larry Farina, representing District Five. And action number two is to appoint two at-large members to serve on the Placer County Charter Review Committee. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Questions from the board? Okay, how does the appointment of the at-large go? Is, did, does someone nominate someone and then we decide?
Well, I thought I'd see if there were any members of the public that wanted to address us.
Okay, sure.
And then maybe consider.
And if there's no questions from the board, then is there any, are there any questions in the audience? Anyone here? Or comments? All right, is there anyone online who would like to make a comment?
There is. Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Greetings, Supervisor Stein, Louise Alessi, again, from Christian Valley Park. I was hoping to, whoever's in chambers right now that's vying for the two at-large seats, have an opportunity to come, be asked any other further questions from you or introduce themselves. With that said, I am in support of Troy Alessi, my handsome son, who's sitting there, and Patty Nifer. My son has been completely raised in Placer County, went to schools here. Only departure was to go to UC Santa Barbara to get his degree. But he's completely vested and chooses to inherit this property and move forward. So he's a millennial and I think his age sector speaks a lot to developing and/or preserving the document. So with that, I yield, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's Donna Delna from Penren, and I'm calling to, I guess, endorse or nominate Patty Nifer for her 20 to 30 years' worth of great service for Penren and fighting for us. And also Diane's son, Troy Alessi. If this is the way we do it, I would like to nominate or put my vote in for those two. I think they're both would be really great at helping to protect what we all love. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hi, Cheryl Berkema, Placer County. I also would like to nominate Troy Alessi and Patty Nifer. Patty, in particular, her, her commitment on the MAC for all these years is very commendable. And I would also like to ask that the, any candidates from the Placer Business Alliance be removed from consideration. Cindy Gustafson, actually, for one of the at-large board members for LAFCO, did not even put the application out for public review. So there seems to be special accommodation for Placer Business Alliance and stacking committees, if you will. So I'd ask that they be removed, anyone that has that on their resume. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No further comments.
Okay, discussion from the board.
Madam Vice Chair, two things. One is LAFCO goes through a public process for any vacancies, so that isn't done by myself alone at all. LAFCO's a public body. So to that last comment. But I do have two individuals on the at-large I'd like to make a pitch for. First is Stuart Wells. So Stuart has a broad background in Placer County. He's a business owner. He owns three service stations, lives in Auburn, but owns three service stations going up toward Tahoe, Kingvale, Nyack and Donner. He also owns the Artesian Water Company that we have cans of here and longtime, lifelong Auburn resident. He serves on the North Auburn MAC and the Tahoe, I'm sorry, Donner, Donner Summit MAC. And Stuart is just a very balanced and well-rounded individual. He is a graduate of the Berkeley Business Center Hawthorne School at Cal Berkeley. He also served in the Air Force, is an aviator himself. And as I said, I, I think he has a long time history in Placer County and would be a great addition to the committee to kind of represent the smaller communities and some of the issues and unincorporated. My second one I'd like to speak to is Einer Meisch. Einer is, has a broad background in Placer County Water Agency from his career and understands our entire county and very familiar with water throughout the county and governmental structures, which I think is important. It isn't just about, for Charter Review, you've got to look at what would make good governance in our county. And so I think both of those would be excellent choices. So I'd put in a good word for both of those individuals.
Okay, other insights?
Yes, I would like to speak to Karen Flanagan in District Four for a number of reasons. First, because she's been in the county for over 40 years. I think that's important to have been a member and, and see how governance has been conducted over the years and, and looking into the future. As well as she's very, very involved in the community. She's been serving on the Placer Older Adult Advisory Commission now for going on five years. She has good work experience, but she's also on the, she's a California Senior Legislative Member for the older adult advocacy. And so she does advocate for older adults and housing, et cetera. She also goes from seniors all the way down to youth. She volunteers with the youth of Placer County. And she even does some coaching and, and that sort of thing. So I would highly recommend her to serve as well. I, I will say, I, I put a, put a, a say-so for Einer Meisch because I think Einer is also highly qualified to, to serve.
Okay, do you have any input Supervisor DiMattei? Do you have any input Supervisor Demetay?
Oh, sorry, my mic's already on. Yeah, I read through these. I also concur that in our, having his water experience is probably big in our county. Also, reading through Troy's bio here, being that he brings a young and an attitude to it, and looking at his resume here, I think that he brings another diversity to our community as well that might help out. So I think those would be my two recommendations here.
Okay. Um, so I guess then, does, does someone want to officially? I guess we have, we have multiple nominations for Einer. And we have a couple people for Mr. Alessi, and then there's Stuart Wells and Karen Flanagan, who have all been called out. Was there anyone else I missed? I think those were the names.
Why don't you take it per at-large?
Okay, and then just have a vote on that?
Right.
Okay, thank you for helping. And so I guess we will go with nomination for Einer Meisch. All those in favor of Einer?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And then I'd make a motion for Stuart Wells.
Okay, motion for Stuart Wells. Is there a second? Okay, and is there a?
I will make a motion for Karen Flanagan. As I said, she's.
Just to clarify, sorry, so sorry. Just to clarify, the motion made by Supervisor Gustafson failed for lack of a second.
Okay, thank you. Is that something I can say? Okay, and then now there's a motion for Karen Flanagan. Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No? Then what do we do? Okay, that dies. Okay. Sorry. Okay, and then is there an interest in a motion for Troy Alessi?
I'll make a motion for that.
I will second that. Sorry, I keep forgetting that I'm sitting here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and all opposed? All right.
I'll vote aye on that one.
Okay. All right, so we have.
Otherwise, we'll just sit here all day. We don't need to do that.
Okay. So we have Einer Meisch and Troy Alessi that were selected as the two at-large. And then I suppose we need to take a motion on the first item as well, right? Okay, and so is there a motion for item one? The appointment of the district representatives?
I'll make a motion that we go with the review committees.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
He's moving action item number one.
Oh, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, we are now going to go ahead and go to closed session, and we should be back in about? Half hour? In a little while, we'll be back. Thank you so much.
That's relevant to.
The board will now adjourn to closed session And I'll let county council read us out. The board met in closed session to consider one item of existing litigation, Resource Environmental versus County of Placer. The board heard report and provided direction on a 4-0 vote, Gore absent. That concludes the report out of closed session.
A, Public Works Forest Hill Bridge Butt Weld Testing and Repair Project Engineering and Material Testing Agreement Amendment with Atlas Technical Consultants, Inc.
All right. Thank you so much. Good afternoon, board members. Happy to be here and happy to jump in here, kind of out of order and do my item. So I'm Matt Randall, Deputy Director with Public Works, leading the project with Atlas. So, got a couple components to this presentation. I'll share some background. I've got some slides too with pictures of the work. And then obviously, at the end, talk about the action and happy to answer any questions. This is the second time I've been to the board with this project, but just want to refresh everybody's memory. The Federal Highway Administration is requiring all agencies that have bridges with the special T1 steel to do ultrasonic testing. This is a nationwide effort. There's about 65 bridges nationwide that are being tested, and about 12 in California. And we're one of the two local agencies that are lucky enough to go through this testing. But ultimately, the issue is about evaluating welds on some older bridges that use this T1 steel. It's a preventative maintenance effort to ensure that these welds are safe for the life of the bridge. So, um, let's see. So the other thing I want to mention too is most of these bridges are on the state highway. The Forest Hill Bridge, obviously, a unique structure, iconic structure. I think we have one of the largest, you know, bridges other than the state highway in California. So again, another thing, this is a high-strength steel that has some unique qualities. So, last summer, on June 25th, your board approved a contract with Atlas Technical Consultants to complete the testing work for the bridge, which included a couple of main components. The first main component was access. All of the testing, we needed to be within arm's length of all the welds. So establishing Atlas, establishing access on the tallest, tallest bridge in the state was the first part. Second was, there's preparation for doing all of the welds. And we had to remove all the paint around the welds to be able to use the ultrasonic testing equipment. So that was part of it too. And then performing the ultrasonic testing itself, and then any engineering analysis for the welds that didn't meet the testing standards, because we're using current testing standards. And then any other incidental repairs and repainting. So those were really the components of the initial contract. So, you know, to date, again, unique bridge, but we've made some great progress. We're about 75% done in terms of the testing of the welds. And so I think going into this, we knew we would find some welds that are deficient. And so that's the whole purpose of the project, was going in to look for these, these welds that weren't, that weren't perfect. So we expected to find some. We actually, when we negotiated the initial contract, we actually looked at other states and other projects. And the rejection rate varied widely all over the nation from somewhere around 10% to up to 75% of the welds. So in some cases, there were quite a few with other, with other bridges that weren't meeting current criteria. So, you know, with the Forest Hill Bridge being a relatively newer bridge, Auburn is actually a great environment if you're a bridge. You know, we don't have saltwater or anything like that. So we thought going in that we'd be on the lower end of the range. And we assumed around 10% of the welds. And ultimately, you know, the cost of the agreement, and walking through the slides, I think you'll see, is really dependent on how many welds that we find that don't meet the standards. So that's ultimately, you know, the reason for this, for this cost increase is that we're finding, we were optimistic in what we thought would be the rejection rate or the deficient rate, and we're actually finding more. So, right now, it's looking like about 37% of the welds have some sort of an issue. About 14% of them are actually what we would call a rejectable indication. So, let's get into some pictures. So talked about access a little bit, just there. We have a couple of different ways that we're getting access to the weld. First is this with what we call under-bridge inspection or UBIT trucks. We call them snooper trucks, is the other way. We have two on the project that you can see them here. One is one that is like a lift that reaches underneath the bridge. And with some of them, we actually can get access down to the lower part of the bridge. And just, I think all of you are familiar with how, I guess, how big the Forest Hill Bridge is. But by the numbers, the bridge, 730 feet above the American River. The bridge from the deck down to the bottom part of the truss varies up to a maximum depth of about 120 feet. So it's quite a ways down that we have to get to get testers down to that lower cord. So, and in some cases, the snooper trucks can't reach down to the bottom part of the cord. So we have other ways that we're getting access. And that is, we're erecting some scaffolding. On the left, you see some finished scaffolding on the lower cord. On the right-hand side, you see our, some workers installing some temporary scaffolding. So this is all temporary works, just to make sure we can get to the welds. Thing I don't have a picture of, but it's worth mentioning is we actually have people that descend on what we call spider baskets, which are just baskets that take people down to the diagonals and other places. So that's part of the access, part of this project as well. As far as the weld prep, mentioned that, it's removing all of the paint down to, I mean, this is what steel looks like, you know, when you take the paint off. And it actually is, it can be tricky. We have as-built drawings for the whole bridge. If you look at that picture, you can kind of see some discoloration, but just finding the welds in some case can be a little bit tricky. We have these plans that show us where they are, but even there are some complications. When you've got 288 of these to find, it gets to be tricky. And just to give you a scale to, these boxes are around three to, about three feet wide and about three feet deep. So it's quite a bit of area to remove. And these are also perforated members, meaning there's an inside and an outside as well. So we're getting, not just removing paint on the inside, but also inside some of these boxes as well. Here you see some of the ultra, ultra, ultrasonic testing work. Some of them are easier. Once we get somebody there, the picture on the left shows one of our testers doing, doing the testing itself. Some of them are in a little bit more precarious positions where you're actually inside the box itself. And then here's another picture of just, just getting access to the welds. Again, getting inside the box. Some of it is underneath the main cord too. And it's really important that we get access to all different parts, because when we find a weld that needs additional investigation, there's more work that goes from there. And here, another picture just of the ultrasonic testing. I mean, the picture on the left, it's hard to see, but there's actually a rail there. Safety is a huge issue when we're over the river, making sure everybody is safe. So this, this slide is really what the project is about. This is what we're looking for. If you look at the, the picture in the middle is the actual ultrasonic testing equipment screen. And welds without defects, you would just see a flat line. What we're looking for, if you see in the middle of the picture, there's a spike. That indicates that there's a problem with that weld. And once we find it, the tester needs to move the equipment around to try to map it, the length, where it is. And then the other pictures, we actually use a powder that gets put on some of these indications that shows us exactly where it is. And so, some of these welds, where they come from, these were probably in place when the bridge was first constructed, part of fabrication. And over time, the whole idea is if we did nothing, these, these things that are, that are imperfections in the weld that you can't see with the naked eye, they would grow. They would grow over time to the point where it would be, to the point where we needed to shut down the bridge. Right now, we're catching these before they're an issue, which is the whole, again, the whole objective of the project. So, what do you do? What do we do when we find these? And, and the reason why they would grow, I guess, the bridge, when a load goes over a bridge, all of the, the parts of the bridge kind of flex, and you get some tension and compression in them. And over time, these cracks, if you do nothing, those load cycles, they would increase a little bit. So that's what we're trying to stop. And the way that we do it, first thing, is when we find these, we have engineers in an office that are running a big, big numerical models, analyzing the bridge. They analyzed it before we even started the work so that we would know, hey, if we find some of these, what would we do? But then, once we find them, we look at it again. We do a numerical analysis, just to make sure. Obviously, the most important thing is keeping the bridge and the public safe. And so we always, you know, the bridge staying open, we want to make sure it's safe. So the engineers in the office will run numbers and then come up with a repair plan, which is, you kind of see a screenshot there in the middle of that. And what I mentioned, it's Atlas Consultants, but, oops, but also part of the team is TY Lin. It's a world-class engineering firm. They've worked on huge, huge bridges. So we've got really a world-class team and some engineers and testers that are well-qualified. So finally, when we find these, this would be what we would call an incidental repair. You can see on the left-hand side, we have, we have someone drilling a hole at the bottom. If you, and maybe the better way to look at it is if you look at the picture on the very right-hand side, you see the, the, or the powder we use to find the indications. These are very small holes. If you imagine the structure being a few feet tall, you know, these holes are like an inch to two inches. The, part of the engineering effort is making sure when we drill these holes, the structure has plenty of capacity based on current, current engineering standards and current code. So, but the idea with these holes is that we drill them at the end of the indication and that they won't grow over time. We're arresting the cracks, is kind of what the terminology that we use. So, so that's, that's what happens. And again, this is only on about 14% of the welds. A lot of them are finding some imperfections, but they don't need any effort. And then the last part is putting paint back on the areas where we removed some of the paint, the painting for the testing. So, here at the end, small text, but the big thing with this, I think that's important in terms of money, is 80% of it is being funded by the Highway Bridge Program, which funds, you know, all, nearly all of our bridge projects. And so that's a big thing. We are putting in 20% using our RMRA, our SB1 Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Act funds, and so on, the funding part, the county's paying for 20. And the funding, also, I think I want to mention too that this is the county team, but we're working closely with Caltrans and Federal Highways, who are also part of the team, attending weekly meetings, looking over the work, approving the funding for this as well. So another important, important part of this. So, with that, I'll read the action and then happy to answer any questions and appreciate, again, you fitting me in here. But the action is to adopt a resolution authorizing the director of Public Works or designee to execute amendment number one to existing professional services agreement number 001356 with Atlas Technical Consultants, Inc. for professional engineering and material testing services for the Forest Hill Bridge Butt Weld Testing and Repair Project to increase the agreement amount by $3,54,394 for a total amount not to exceed $8,465,381, and to execute contract amendments up to $846,538, all subject to county council and risk management concurrence. And then finally, to determine the proposed action is exempt from environmental review pursuant to sequel guideline section 15301(c). So, with that, happy to answer any questions or back and look at any pictures.
Great, thank you. That was impressive. You could not pay me enough to be one of those people. So I'm really thankful there's people that aren't scared of heights out there.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, questions from the board? No? Anyone in the public? Anyone online? Okay.
I did think of a question.
Okay.
You may have answered and I may have missed it. For the other deficient welds, what do we anticipate the repair costs to be?
Well, we haven't found any that we haven't been able to address yet.
Okay.
So, so, but that doesn't mean that there couldn't be, I mean, we're still, we've got 25% more, about 80 more welds to look at. You know, the plan going into this was to take care of the drillouts with this contract. If there were something bigger, we would come back with a construction contract or something like that.
Okay.
So.
Supervisor Demeté, did you have a comment?
No, I'm just ready to move.
Oh, okay.
Let me ask one more question.
Yes.
So how do you go, you don't do all the weld testings for the whole bridge? I think you may have said, you do it in series or?
Yeah, well, first it's the T1 welds, there's, there's different grade steel. And then it's, it's sequentially. We have a work plan where we're working on one side of the bridge and then moving over to the other. But, but yeah, it's sort of a labor of love. There's 288, so, yeah.
And are all your people tethered to the bridge?
They are.
Good.
Yes. Yeah, that's part of the safety plan, yep.
I still don't want to do that.
I don't think they did that when they were building the Golden Gate though.
You did.
I don't know. Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question.
Do you want to talk about your experience going over?
Wait, what? Are you mean to?
Would you, did you go over?
Well, are you talking about our, our county line video? Well, yeah, that, actually that is, a good plug would be to, to look at the county line video from a couple of, gosh, I guess it was a couple of months ago where we went over and, and talked about all this stuff. And we actually had some pictures in the video too of the, of, I think Kevin was the tester who was doing some testing. So it was fun. So we did go out there with Daniel, obviously.
Nice.
And did you offer the CEO a tour?
Yeah, he was there. He saw it. He, he was, we worked together.
Under the ridge?
Yeah.
Watched the video.
I have a whole respect for you now.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor Demeté.
I'll second.
And a second by Supervisor Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No objections? Okay, great, thank you so much, Matt, appreciate it.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks for the briefing on, it made it easy for today.
Good, thank you.
We will move to, I-
I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair. While you're here, I had this up and that was part of my distraction. Over the weekend, I got an email.
Okay.
Praise in public, so don't worry.
Okay.
Criticize in private, praise in public. This is from Lieutenant Brandon, Brandon from CHP.
Okay.
And he wanted to express his sincere appreciation for our roads crew led by Justin Stevens, who were instrumental in ensuring operations for the holiday weekend traffic were able to be implemented. He went, goes on and on, but I just wanted to shout that out to your roads crew who does a tremendous job.
Yeah, thank you Supervisor.
Thank you, while you were there, I know it wasn't on the agenda, but.
No, well, and Justin's our Tahoe foreman, so make sure, hopefully he sees this, but appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move to Item 6A, Public Works, Presentation of Updated County Abandonment Procedures.
Okay.
Hi.
Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Karen and Daniel. And I, my item does not involve heights, thankfully, so I'm not a fan either, so. I'm Sarah Williams, Right-of-Way Agent for the Department of Public Works. And with me today is Kevin Ordway, our Engineering Manager. And we're here to talk to you about the department's abandonment procedures update. So we're just going to give you a brief overview of what we've put together on that. The action formally before your board today is a nice, easy one. Receive a presentation on the Department of Public Works' updated abandonment procedures. And just quickly, before we dive into the specifics of the procedures, I wanted to give you just a little bit of background on what an abandonment is. It's also known as a vacation, which would be a much better topic, I think, to present about, but we do refer to them as abandonments here. So an abandonment is a formal request of your board to relinquish a public right that is held by the county. So that could be any type of easement, it could be a fee simple interest. Anything that's held by, in the county's name, on behalf of the public can be requested for abandonment. Okay, and that's always subject to the approval of your board. And we undertake those requests in accordance with the procedures laid out by the Streets and Highways Code, Subdivision MAP Act, and of course, our county ordinance. And these requests involve a large number of staff, including right-of-way, survey, and development professionals, you know, our CDR department, a lot of eyes that look at these applications. So that brings us to why the update. Foremost, we want to modernize the process. We're going to drag DPW into the 21st century here. And we'll be accepting electronic submissions and electronic payments. So we'll utilize our Acela system to take this in as a permit that allows applicants to pay online rather than submitting fully paper submittals with hard copy checks. You know, makes it a lot easier for folks to get their documents and their funds in to us. And I think a lot of us come to expect that, that kind of ability these days, pay online. We will also use Acela to track responses from other county departments to these abandonment requests. So we circulate for comments to involve departments and then we will track their responses within Acela so that other divisions can see where we're at as well. We've created a formal application form that's specific to abandonments. We did not have one like that prior to now. And that form will include checklists for applicants to make sure that they've got a complete submittal. They've contacted all appropriate parties and we'll provide the names of those parties. They'll include their letters. And the procedures also now include kind of an outline of what the fair market value requirement means and that there is a possibility that it could be part of their submittal so that they're very aware upfront, you know, of what the fees and costs could be. We've also streamlined and expedited our process, which means shorter review times for applicants. With more complete applications upfront with those utility letters, department letters, adjacent landowner letters, we will be able to complete the county-side review and move forward with actions to your board faster than we have been under the current procedure. And we've also enhanced our documents, which I've just talked about a little bit with those checklists, and our guides with more specific information in the procedures now as well to give folks a better idea of what, what the outlay is upfront. And we've updated these processes in line with other local agencies and other internal processes within the county. So this is more similar now to, say, a land development, like pre-meeting or review for an application. So a more thorough upfront screening process of what constitutes a complete application. And we did look at a number of other local agencies to see how they were doing this, including the City of Sacramento, the County of Sacramento, and El Dorado County, just to name a few. That's not a full list, but they're all doing very similar things. And this in turn will reduce our staff time that's invested on unsubmitted applications. So oftentimes, we'll receive an inquiry and have several exchanges back and forth about potential abandonment, but then that application or would-be application is abandoned itself. So we spend a number of staff hours reviewing these items that never actually come to application status. So this will help us prescreen some of these inquiries and hopefully receive more complete and more, let's say, serious submittals. The applications that do not go through also take staff time away from our capital improvement projects. And we have right-of-way staff, which is me, is looking at all of these abandonment requests as well as handling our capital improvement projects. So that would take a significant amount of some of this work off of staff's plate and allow me to focus on other priorities. We've also added to our list of documents, a letter of agency. So oftentimes, especially in the case of private developments, these applications are submitted by survey or engineering firms on behalf of a landowner, not actually by the landowner themselves. So this letter of agency creates an acknowledgement by that landowner that someone is applying on their behalf. They are aware of it and they've signed off on it. So we'll have that within our packet as well so that we know folks are cognizant of what's happening or being requested to happen affecting their property. Next, just to give you kind of an overview of how we've shifted the workflow, have a outline of the current process laid out against what the future process will be. And the green bubbles are representative of tasks that county staff handle. And the blue will be tasks now handled by the applicants. So you can see we go through a pre-review and a feasibility review. And that's kind of that pre-work process that I talked about, that we can get through those first two steps and, and never receive a complete application, although we've engaged multiple levels of staff to discuss one of these items. And then, if they do apply, I identify all utilities who might be affected or have an interest in this particular easement or fee simple area. And we circulate to all of those utility providers, a complete packet. Then simultaneously, we also circulate to county divisions that might have an interest for their comment. And if appropriate, there are different types of abandonments. But if it does apply, we may have to send letters to adjacent landowners and also seek their concurrence. So that process becomes rather time-consuming between following up with each agency and making sure that you, you receive their comments of either no objection or some specific condition. And then, if this applies, the fair market value is calculated for the interest at hand and then taken to the department head for approval and then brought before your board for review and ultimately recording. Now, in our new process, we would have more of a front-loaded application. So these applications would be considered complete when they come in with all of those utility provider circulations, landowners' circulations, and county division circulations already in hand. So that would shift that portion of the workload to coming in with the completed application at the beginning rather than staff going through that timeline. Other than that, it remains largely the same. We would take it for the fair market value analysis and bring it before your board and then record it.
Sarah, can I ask a question on that one? On the, the new part where the applicant will contact county departments? How many county departments typically would someone have to contact?
So it depends on the type of easement interest that's being requested for abandonment. Road, for instance, would be every department. That could be five to six total departments. Typically, it's less than that. It's not always a roadway interest that we're looking to abandon. So it's something that we'll provide to the applicant, we'll give them the list of departments and then contact people. That's part of our packet as well.
Okay, thanks. I guess my only concern on that one is just like the burden on a resident trying to navigate through all of those departments. But I, I guess if they're getting a document that at least lays out if they hit a snag somewhere, hopefully, there's a method by which they could reach out and say, hey, I'm, you know, I'm not getting a response from X department. Can you help? Like if there's, that's my only concern on that one.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And we do plan to have kind of a review from the right-of-way side to give them a determination as to whom they need to contact. And then also I'm working on some form letters, sample letters, so that they can see how to contact these folks. And then absolutely, if they have any questions or issues, they need any help with anything, they can definitely reach out to us.
Great, thanks.
For assistance. Next, we have a sample, which I believe is in your packet, of our new procedures document, which has significantly more information in it and outlines that process for applicants. So really to give them a better idea of what the process is, what the specifics are, and how to put their applications together. And this is a sample of that new abandonment application form and one of the templates that's included there. So it will really outline what specific documents are needed. And then there are actually subsequent checklists to this showing who folks have contacted and then directing them to attach those letters of approval from the folks that they've contacted. And I'll give you a minute to read that. These are samples of our form templates. So applicants would take these templates, send them to the utility providers and county department folks that they've identified as involved in this, whatever the interest is that they're requesting for abandonment. And then this simplifies the response for those agencies. They can simply say they do approve, they have objections, and sign that. And then that will be included in the packet for the application. And then our last one, this is a sample of that letter of agency that I talked about that shows a property owner is aware that someone is making this application on their behalf and they've signed this letter. Okay? And also as part of our process, we are considering revising the current application fee structure, which hasn't been updated in many years. So we're looking carefully at our existing fee schedule and our internal billings before we return to your board with an update on our findings and recommendations for that. And that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions?
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board, Supervisor Gustafson?
Thank you, thanks. I appreciate the streamlining and the updated approach. The one thing I wasn't sure of, at what point, because we have a number of these kind of paper roads in Tahoe that are also public access to the lake. And that has created an issue where it's extremely valuable to the property owner. And, you know, how we express the interest of the public in continuing to have access at some of these points.
Yeah, Supervisor Gustafson, great question. I think you may have been involved a couple of years ago on one of these requests for-
In my neighborhood, as I recall.
That's right. So there's actually a separate layer that I use with those that may be affecting public beach interests, particularly in the Tahoe area.
Or public access to any, you know, recreation, because it's not a circulation issue.
Right.
Right? You're not, you know, and in that situation, I think we arrived at a good compromise with the property owner. But nonetheless, we didn't want to cut off that public access to-
Right, absolutely.
That vista point, yeah.
And for that one, we have a subgroup or a working group that we call the Tahoe Beaches Committee.
Okay.
And so when I have those come through that have that potential, I take those specially-
Through a different-
And make sure that everyone sees and that we consider, you know, all the shore zone ordinances, everything that goes into those Tahoe beaches gets-
And just, and just for the rest of the board, in, in the particular situation we're talking about, the neighbors all agree, like, let's keep the public away from, you know, from this access point. And there's challenges with the access point. But I appreciated your leadership in going through that. And I just want to make sure we continue to have those discussions because there are places that are truly special that we want to continue to provide public access.
Absolutely, and yes, I, I will still continue to, you know, have a lot of oversight on these and make sure that they go through the proper channels.
Yep. Thank you, okay. Any other questions? Yes, Supervisor Jones.
Good afternoon, thank you for this updated procedures. I have a question. To abandon a public right-of-way, the right-of-way must be unnecessary for present or prospective public use. And the abandonment must be in the public interest, must not inhibit access to other properties. Who, who will determine that?
So that is the action that your board considers. And those, those items are laid out, I believe, in the Streets and Highways Code. Thank you, Eric. But that's what's under consideration by the board as you, as you vote on these items. Eric maybe wants to add a little bit to that.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Eric Brumfield, Deputy County Counsel. Supervisor Jones, those requirements are set out in the Streets and Highways Code, as Sarah mentioned. And those would be part of the findings you would make as a board if there was an action brought to you to abandon an interest of the county.
Okay, so tell me if it's just a piece of a road, kind of dead ends in a sense, but would students parking cars on that road constitute a public interest?
It would be a, it would be a fact-specific inquiry and that would something that staff would have to look at and then present that to your board and then either support it with findings or make the recommendation that the abandonment would not go forward because it doesn't meet those requirements of the Streets and Highways Code.
Yeah, okay. And then, must not inhibit access to other properties. Does that mean other properties that are like not bounding, boundering on that roadway? There are some properties that are back behind those homes that are just have been allowed to use an easement out to that, that roadway. So is it something we could not prevent? So we go into greater detail for everybody else. Abandoning this portion of a road in my district, they want, for the purposes of putting a gate up so nobody can come in and out of that roadway. But back in there where the houses are, there's an easement for another parcel to, to use this road for their, their nonprofit business, which they do mental health care. That's Hart's Landing, that they access this. And they, but they can't bring their carriage and their, because they, they pull carriages with their, their students. They walk the carriages. They won't be able to access once that gate goes up if we abandon it. So are we going to be taking that? Will we have to take that into consideration?
Well, first, first of all, I think you have to be careful about using the word easement. Because one of the factual determinations this staff would make is, is there in fact recorded easement?
No, not easement, not an easement on the road.
But what I'm saying is be careful about using easement at this point. The whole purpose of this application process is to find out who has actual legal rights to the area that's proposed for abandonment.
Okay, so that would be my question.
Just because you use something, doesn't mean you've got a legal right to use it. But that has to be determined on a factual basis per application.
So the thing that allows them to do- So the thing that allows them to this road, I guess, has been a prescriptive easement, that they've been allowed to use that?
I don't know that.
Well, that's just what I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, that that's what they've had all these years, is a prescriptive easement to come out of that way.
That's a legal determination.
I guess so, but...
So we can't sit here and say that's, that's a prescriptive easement. We don't know. It's a matter of determining in every one of these applications, what rights are there? Who has a right? What is that right? Can we, can we actually verify that right?
So, so basically, yeah. So the answer to the question is, since they don't, they, their parcel doesn't boundary on that roadway, then they may not, may possibly not be considered in this ordeal.
That's my understanding.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Sorry for the...
That's okay.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone in the public want to comment on this? Anyone online?
Yes. Caller, go ahead and mute your mic and give your comments. John, can you unmute your mic and give your comments?
Wow, what a problem this is.
Andrew, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. Andrew Ryan here from Kings Beach. I'll just quickly dovetail onto Supervisor Gustafson's comments on making sure that everyone needs to be informed when there is a potential abandonment. In 2018, in Kings Beach within our town center, we had an abandonment of public right-of-way on Brockway Vista Ave that went to a private lakefront homeowner to increase their parking, but materially affects our ability to deliver named elements in our Tahoe Basin area plan, namely our boardwalk access through there. It also limits public access and emergency access. And I think the breakdown in this specific instance was just that the planning department had not been involved to overlay our area plan on the abandonment. So, well, I like the sound of these advancements and streamlining. It sounds, it sounds great. I don't think that the Beaches Committee would be enough in village centers and plan centers for overview, overlay of our area plan. I think the planning department would need to be required to review. So thank you very much. Sounds great.
Thank you.
No further comments.
Okay, great. This is not an action item, so unless there's any other questions by the board, we will say thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We will move to our 11:50 timed item, 7A Public Works, North Lake Tahoe Parking Management
Good afternoon. I'm Kevin Bell. I'm the Assistant Director of Public Works, and I'm here today to talk about parking management in the Tahoe Basin. As you know, Rebecca Tabor was, was carrying on the effort to implement and start a parking management program in the Tahoe Basin, and that came out of the Resort Triangle Transportation Plan. The parking management was a piece of that, and encouraging folks to, you know, take other means of transportation, or if they come to the community to get a hotel room and stay, or leave their car parked in that parking lot, and take public transit, or ride bikes, or a variety of things. And so the parking management was a piece of that RTTP, the Resort Triangle Transportation Plan. And Rebecca and our consultant team Dixon, who are here today to give the bulk of the presentation, have done a fantastic job getting it to this point. So Rebecca retired, I think her last day was a week and a half ago, something like that, and so I'm trying to pick up and carry on the effort for the parking management. And so we'll get into, I'll read the actions requested at the end of the presentation. But I did want to talk a little bit about some of the efforts that Rebecca and Dixon have gone through over the last couple of years to engage the community and try to get input and feedback from, from the folks in the community, not just the, the residents there, but visitors and businesses and, and engage.
Sorry, one.
Oh. Should I stop? Is that? So, over the last two years, as I mentioned, they've really done a great job trying to reach out to the community, and that includes, you know, five different presentations in front of your board, and in addition to that, a couple of consent items as well. There were meetings with the North Tahoe Business Association Economic Vitality Committee, had a field walk with that group, and then four additional meetings with that, that team, held 10 community meetings. Two of those included Spanish translation services. There were meetings with the community group, Community Advisory Group, that included a walk on July 25th, and included a number of key stakeholders, including the CEO's office, DPW, Town of Truckee, North Tahoe PUD, Whitecaps Pizza, the business owner for Whitecaps, and Strong North Tahoe, and EVC. Held at least 14 focused key partner and stakeholding, stakeholder meetings. There was additional public outreach, including website, Engage Placer, a number of news reports, and, and press releases, parking pamphlets. We also had business cards made for our parking enforcement officers, so that people could understand who they were and be able to reach out to them. And, and I'll say with the, the parking enforcement, we did, a lot of their effort was in outreach and education of the, the public and the visitors. It was not just, we did not send them out there just to write tickets and collect fines. The intent was to educate people and to get compliance, not just write tickets. And so there was a huge effort in trying to, you know, give warnings, but also as they were out, they were able to engage and talk with the community about, you know, what, what was now being enforced that had not really been enforced previously. And then lastly, in January, there were 70 letters that were hand-delivered to property owners along Brook Avenue, and Brook Avenue parking modifications will be included in the presentation, but that was included, as well as 20 letters that were mailed, and did have a couple of responses from the business owners, and again, wanting to take that feedback and make adjustments where we can to, to make it something that meets the needs of the community. And, and I've talked with folks about, you know, parking, and it's something that, that impacts the business owners, because if there's somebody that's parked in front of their business, and they go to the beach all day, then somebody who wants to go and patronize the business, they don't have a place to park, and so it makes it harder for people to go to those businesses and, and, you know, patronize that business. It's harder for the residents, because as people fill up the parking along the beach, they start to overflow into the neighborhoods, and then the neighbors don't have places to park. And as visitors, it's, it can be frustrating as well to go and, and find no parking. And so that's, that's part of, you know, what we're trying to, to address here. And so on the screen, we've got six goals of the North Taco, Tahoe Parking Management Program. So we've talked about some of those, about the impacts to traffic, you know, trying to get people out of their cars and, and manage the parking in a way that encourages that, promoting the alternative transportation, achieving some of the environmental goals by lowering the amount of traffic that's in the area, supporting the businesses that I talked about, and, and trying to create some turnover in front of the, the businesses for parking, so that people can get in and out of those businesses easily, making sure that it's safe and accessible, that the Kings Beach, and then mitigating the, the impacts to the residents in those neighborhoods. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Julie Dixon, who is here to give...
Thank you. Thank you all for having us here today. I came prepared, because the other night I had a cough, and I apologize, so I'm ready. So I'm Julie Dixon, and we've been working all in and around the Tahoe Basin for about the last eight or nine years, and one of the things I know that you can all appreciate is solving this challenge will not happen overnight. And so what we're really here to talk about today is really that first step and the progress that we've made, and really talking about those next steps, because as I like to say, parking touches everything, and parking's a learned behavior. In order to change that behavior, it's something that we have to do incrementally. So Kevin really gave a really great overview of everything we're going to cover today, but a real overview of what we've accomplished over this last year in particular, and then really talking about specific statistics from this past summer, and then looking at the management strategies moving forward. So really talking about the efforts that were made. I have to really reinforce that I jokingly said it takes a village the other night to manage a parking solution, and it truly does. The number of departments and agencies that have been involved in this, because again, so many entities are affected around Kings Beach, and so the collaborative aspect, I mean, we have basically a state highway running right through the middle of the community. So it was really important that we wanted to focus on compliance. Many of us have been coming to that area for decades and practically our entire lifetimes, and so if we're going to do something different, we needed to prepare those visitors. We needed to prepare our community members who live there. And again, what Kevin mentioned, I can't emphasize enough, it was really about outreach and engagement, because we wanted to do something different. And you'll see that there was enforcement, but you can see it was just a drop in the bucket comparatively to what it could have been. We collected data, and that was really important as well, because you want to use data to make effective decisions moving forward, and our opportunity to really start to move that needle and have an impact on traffic. Some of the factors, again, when we have the transit program that we do, this just gives us the opportunity to further enhance it and to be able to utilize it. We were able to, for the last half of the summer, leverage a paid parking demonstration in the Christmas Tree Lot. Christmas Tree Lot is the actual lot that's the closest to the state beach parking lot entrance, so it was picked very specifically and strategically for this pilot program. So when I talk about compliance, it was really important to make sure that we had consistent resources, and that's really important, is you want to have that visibility factor, because that's what people are looking for. They're looking to understand what the rules are, and if I look over my shoulders, there's going to be somebody there who's going to catch me. And that was part of the reality of having this ambassador-type role, because we like to talk about parking as being a customer service extension of the community, and so whatever we could do to help communicate that. I mentioned multi-agencies, and we basically had community development also providing additional supports, so that we could cover the days, the evenings, and the weekends, because as you all know, when it comes summer season, well, year-round for that matter, the popularity of this community is just overwhelming at times. And so when we talk about that opportunity to focus on education and outreach, even when we launched the Christmas Tree Lot, the county had personnel in the parking lot to talk to people, because again, they've parked there for however long, they're just going to walk right off the lot. So it was really about engaging people and making sure that they understood that there's new rules, new processes. Something else that was really heard from the community was the concern about overstays and the abandoned vehicles. When you were talking about abandonment in the earlier conversation, for me, abandonment is about abandoned vehicles. And so that's something that the county really took a real positive action on, making sure that we were educating people about the overstays on vehicles, and also helping work with some of the private property parking lots, and helping them get some of those abandoned vehicles off property, or some of those oversized vehicles that tend to stay for longer than they're supposed to. So in the end, between July 1st and September 30th, 1,266 citations were actually issued for parking violations, and I think it's important to highlight, again, drop in the bucket compared to the number of cars that are there. And then one of the things that we really want to focus on for this next year is also bringing down appeals, because of that 1,266 citations, a significant number of them were appealed. That number is not unexpected when you talk about launching a new program, because again, it's new to people, and so our hope is, is that as we continue this consistent model, that we'll start to see a decrease in the number of appeals. But that also takes up staff time and resources. No matter how much automation that we bring to a process, again, people still have to review, still have to be concerned, still have to address questions, and answer the phones, because that's another factor, is a lot of phone calls. Besides all the engagement on the field, everybody wants to know what's happening as well. So I mentioned data, and you might recall from previous conversations, when we hit 85% occupancy, it basically is the industry standard for when we're near or at capacity, and it's when we need to start making parking management decisions. On the left side of the screen, you'll see the July 8th through August 5th, which was basically the first half of those data that was collected, and August 6th is when the paid parking pilot initiated in the Christmas Tree Lot. You can see on the left side that the average data that was collected showed that occupancy on whole, including the state beach, was at 82%. I know it comes as no surprise, this is a popular region, especially during that peak part of the summer season, but that is something that when we start to talk about parking management solutions moving forward, the potential expansion for paid parking, and also the rate structures. We've had a lot of folks talk about the fact that, hey, you really need to be charging more money. We'll talk about the rates here in another slide, but when we talk about the rates, it's also important to recognize to have a cohesive plan, so that it basically covers the entire area. Otherwise, you'll have the spillover effect, where people will avoid those paid parking areas and just move deeper into the neighborhoods. But talking specifically about the paid parking program, we had 27 paid parking spaces in the Christmas Tree Lot, and we collected a lot of feedback about the technology and the policies. And again, you can see that we had lower occupancy in the parking lot when we launched the program, because again, this was the only location, other than the state beach, that was a paid location. So when folks saw that they had to pay, they could potentially move to a different location. When we utilized the equipment, we had 89% of the transactions that utilized credit cards, and this is without providing any alternative means of payment. We didn't have mobile payment, or text-to-pay, or any of those other options that would come with the expansion of the program. And important to consider this program a success is that we had a net positive. So we basically had a net positive of 94, 94, $9,445 and some change. And that's important to highlight, that basically without all the direct program costs, and also the portion of staffing costs, this program was positive, and this was basically our first dip our toes into this particular process. We did have a daily rate, and we also had a peak rate, so that was important, too, for the differential, and some might say that those rates need to be higher, but again, this was only one parking lot to launch the initial program. The feedback that we received was overall very positive. People said the equipment was easy to use. The long-term parkers really appreciated the rates. They thought that they were fair, that they were accessible, and that's something that I always like to really reinforce when we talk about a municipally managed parking program, you always need to consider equitability and accessibility as well. And then there was also really good signage and engagement with the community, and again, with our public work staff, as well as our parking enforcement officers, or I like to call it parking ambassadors. And you see there on the right side of the screen, just some of the examples of some of the flyers, and then some of the potential improvements is they wanted, because everything was a flat rate base, the request was maybe some hourly rates to really allow for that dynamic pricing, to allow short-term parkers, in particular, this lot is right next to an ice cream shop, so their ability to be able to just pay for an hour rate to be able to run in and get their ice cream, adding the mobile payment options, and then also adding a Spanish language translation on the pay stations, just to have alternative language options. So when we talk about the strategies for the summer moving forward, the first real consideration is the opportunity to activate loading zones along the state highway. This is particularly important, because if we have those active drop-off zones, where you can drop off your passengers, rather than queuing up and backing up the highway while you're waiting to get into the state beach, if you could actually drop off your family or guests and all of their beach gear, and leave them to go find a spot while you go to a more remote location and find a place to park, that could really serve us well. And we also want to continue the engagement on what we call shared public-private parking agreements, where we could actually leverage some of the assets that exist. We got really close last year with Safeway, and we were really crossing our fingers for that, but we continue to also engage on the private business owners, the banks potentially when they're closed on the weekends, when some of our more popular times are available, and we've had interest. So county staff continue to pursue those. We know that we want to make the recommendation to consider having a parking full-time employee that helps manage this program year-round, and then to also re-verify the inventory. This is important, that once the snow melts, is to just, again, make sure everything's where it's supposed to be, revalidate the number of spaces, and then initiate the data collection. We also were just talking before the meeting, too, of how important it is to monitor abandoned vehicles, and making sure that we have that kind of spring cleanup before we start to welcome our spring and summer visitors into the region. This is another important strategy, which is where is the parking? So we want to have a comprehensive holistic wayfinding plan, and these are based on static signs that really identify where they can go to park. Interestingly enough, a lot of people don't know the parking lots that are available right behind the commercial businesses, so to be able to direct folks to some of those locations would be really key. And as we talk, start to expand this program, is the consideration of employee parking is something that's really important, so that we identify where do we want our employees to park, so it's accessible to their workspaces, but also so that they can easily park their cars and not worry about getting time limit violation citations, and also not further infringing on our residential, which is something that also needs to be considered, is as we start to... start to effectively manage parking over the years, we might have a spillover effect into our neighborhoods. So the consideration of making sure that the county code is written so that the neighborhood could appeal or request a residential parking permit program if needed. It's not always a requirement, but it's nice to have the policies there. So if the time comes that that's a need, that can become something that can become an effective solution. But the signage is a big part of this, and this is also something that we have been collaborating with Caltrans and the other agencies to be sure that this was a collective solution. And then Kevin mentioned Brook Avenue. This was something based on community feedback. We've had a lot of popularity impact in this location, and it is affecting some of the access to our commercial businesses. So the recommendation to be able to implement a loading zone for commercial loading on one of the block faces, on one of the spaces. And to also implement a two-hour time limit on the south side of Brook Avenue, that's six parallel spaces. And then on the north side, have a two-hour time limit for summer only because we want to make that into also an active snow removal location as well during the winter season. And we know that this will help promote turnover for some of those premium spaces for some of our businesses. Because Kevin couldn't have said it better, one of our biggest challenges is the recreation users taking up our commercial business spaces, which is why we have the time limits, and their willingness to basically eat a ticket for that matter because that's the cost of going to the beach for the day. So we really want to be active in that. And that's one of the things you might recall, you implemented the escalating penalty schedule that is also a really big win for your community because that type of punitive schedule does have an effect on behavior. And I also want to let you know, other agencies are now mimicking your solution, so it has really become an effective model, so I just wanted to let you know that. And we talked about enforcement. Again, I do like to talk about compliance, and I really have to highlight just how terrific staff was this last year. You'll see there on the right side of the screen, Zariah, one of our parking enforcement officers, actually created this parking fine menu and took it on a little bit of a comical spin to just help educate people when they were out there, to help them understand in a positive way like why we're enforcing so people would understand the rules. And this was really again, a big part of this process is getting people to understand we're doing some stuff differently. And the recommendation this summer is so again, still focus on customer service, focus on education, but you would likely see a higher volume of citations potentially because we're looking to be more consistent with the enforcement. Because we've also leveraged two license plate recognition technology vehicles have actually been installed, so we are ready to go with data collection and also ready to go with the enforcement side of things. And then our also recommendation is to continue to consider the staffing needs. The recommendation at this point is basically, the goal is to have three FTEs and two seasonal summer help for the program ideally. And so we're working towards that mission as we move forward. And then for the paid parking program, right now, the recommendation is Christmas Tree Lot, and the suggestion is to add Brook Lot to that location because that was so popular, also the proximity to the beach. And then the consideration of any of the shared parking locations could also be monetized potentially. And again, this is about gradual change, and you know, maybe next year we'll be back here to say the other county lots as well. But the real goal here again, is to focus on compliance and customer service. We're looking at developing a sustainable solution so that this is a program that again, really comes down to quality of life in that region. And we're also making the recommendation to update the county code to enable paid parking so that we were in that place because that was a pilot that we did this last year. And then we talked about the technology and infrastructure. Some of this gets into the weeds by working with the treasurer's office so that we're readied with the merchant and terminal IDs so that we can accept payments. Also procuring additional pay stations based on the action from today, allowing for the use of mobile payment and text-to-pay options. I should also highlight the Park Tahoe app, which is utilized in other areas throughout the basin. That could be an opportunity to leverage the Park Tahoe app in this particular program, and it wouldn't require the procurement of a new solution for one that's already been established. And then also introducing Spanish language on the pay stations. And with that, I will hand the mic back over to Kevin.
Thank you, Julie. And so with that, I'm going to read the actions requested for you. So we're asking that you conduct a public hearing to introduce and waive oral reading of an ordinance to amend Placer County Code, Chapter 10, Article 10.12, titled Parking. B, adopt a resolution amending the parking fine schedule with an effective date of April 3rd, 2025. C, adopt a resolution establishing a parking fee schedule with an effective date of April 3rd, 2025. And D, determine the proposed actions are not projects pursuant to sequel guidelines section 15378 and alternatively are exempt from environmental review pursuant to sequel guidelines section 15301C. And I did want to add one last thing. We did actually have a town hall meeting on Thursday of last week that Dixon participated in, had a lot of good interaction with the community, had some comments and questions. But I think overall, generally a positive feedback from the community from that meeting. With that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Kevin. Questions from the board supervisor Gustafson?
Thank you. Well, first off, I was going to thank both of you and others in the room who participated in the town hall. I appreciated it very much. So we've had a number of comments and public comments received and comments during the town hall and others that have come to my office. So, and I think you've addressed all these, but if you want to further elaborate, one is go faster, right? They're excited, there's a lot of interest in this. But same time as they say go faster, we also know that we're playing a bit of whack-a-mole because there's also concern from others who say they're just going to go to different beaches, create different problems in different areas because they're not going to have driven all the way here and not get to the beach, right? So if they can't park in those streets, which I support, but we haven't built new parking to make up for the demands that we're seeing, and we don't have enough micro mass transit or enough transit to, or places to park people before they get to the basin so that they can do that. So I know that's part of the answer to the question of why not go faster, but I just, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and I think it's, I think we'll get there, right? Ultimately, but you're right, there are people who I think would want this to move faster than it is. We have to balance the ability for us to be successful in rolling out these incremental phases as well. We don't want to do something where we roll out a big program and we don't have the staff resources and then it just fails miserably either, right? So there's a lot that goes into it, and we're working on, you know, figuring out what staffing resources we can get and to make the plan work and move forward. And trying to, you know, if we take our time and roll it out in phases, we can learn as we go as well. So we learn about what things work and what things aren't working, and we can make adjustments to apply to the next phase.
Okay, and then also dynamic pricing and why not do more dynamic pricing? Expand it to the other beaches I mentioned. And also the neighborhood parking is going to, I think, pop up because people will push back into the neighborhoods. And then the final request that I wanted to bring forward was the issue of transparency on the dollars collected and where that money goes. We have a lot of startup costs already invested. So even though there was a net revenue, we then bought license plate readers for the vehicles, we have asked for more staffing and staffing that up. So I think we have to make the community aware, they're probably not going to see huge numbers for a while till we get this up and running more fully. I know that's what the town of Truckee experienced because there are a lot of costs in startup and setup. So I hear them and I want to be transparent about where that money goes, and so I would like to make sure we have a cost accounting, you know, tracking system to say, well, this is what we raised and here's what we spent to.
Yep, we actually have created a separate fund for parking management up there, so it should be fully transparent with the revenues and the expenses for that fund. And I will say the 9,400, I think that covered the cost of operating that one lot, not the entire parking management.
Right, and citations did give us, I mean, we had a lot of luck on the citations and compliance.
Yeah, and I think our, the hope is that, yeah, there will likely be fine amounts into the future, but that's not what we hope to build the program on, right? We want to be educating and getting compliance so we don't have a lot of fines that are coming in, recognizing that we probably will have some in perpetuity. But really, it's about trying to get compliance and then using the paid parking eventually to help fund the operation. But it's a couple of years before we're going to get to a positive for the overall.
Great, but as long as we're reporting back and if the community asks, we can establish that. And the final request was, as you know, meeting with the EVC from Kings Beach on a regular basis to report how things are going in that transition. So I appreciate staff's willingness to continue that.
Yep, and I think I have a meeting set with them next week to talk about how we can coordinate on that.
Great, and hopefully they'll include our office in those meetings as well. I'll make sure we try to attend where possible.
Did I answer all of them?
Yes, yeah, I kind of answered my own questions, like, you know, we are going to play whack-a-mole for a while because I really do think people will just find other places to park and then we're going to have to establish more no parking areas.
Yeah, and the residential park, permit parking is something that we are looking at that I think is going to be a part of that solution.
Right, and then you'll have to enforce that.
Yes.
It is definitely a municipal type service in an unincorporated area, so very much appreciate staff attention on this.
Okay, Supervisor Demetey?
Thanks, Kevin. Thank you, guys. Thanks for the briefing, answered most of my questions that I would have had for today. The only question I still have is on Appendix C, your staffing cost was at $60,000. So really, this wasn't a net profitable business, right? So it still costs a lot of money. So if that cost was concentrated to Christmas Tree, where did those funds come from? Did they come from the area of Tahoe? Because, you know, knowing that they want to kind of be their own entity one day, which you don't blame them, is that something that would be able to be maintained by them if at a $60,000? It's a lot of money just for one little parking lot that's no bigger than, you know, 20 cars. That's a lot to absorb $60,000 for $9,000 worth of, not even gross money. But so can you explain to me where that came from? Who would, and would it be just come from that region, that $60,000?
Yeah, so I think we're looking at parking management for the Placer County portion of the basin. So it includes down to Tahoe City, so we're doing enforcement essentially all along the lake. And so there are fines that come from those areas. The plan is to ultimately grow the paid parking to other parking lots, which we're doing, we're proposing a couple now, but also potentially paid on-street parking. And so those revenues will grow, and ultimately, you're right, it did not fund the parking management program this year fully. I think just for that, the period of time that that lot was in operation, it was funding that timeframe, which was, I think, a month and a half roughly. And so, yeah, going from that $9,000 to something that can fully fund all of the staff that we think is needed in order to implement this, that's going to be a number of years and much more paid parking being implemented to get to that point. But ultimately, we do think that it'll get to a point where it can be self-sustaining. So we do have funding from T-Bid, from NTC, and also TOT dollars that are helping support this effort for the next couple of years. Go ahead.
There's one other thing that's really important. We talk about parking management as a whole, we're also talking about accessibility. And I think one of the core aspects of the compliance and enforcement program, paid parking is an important component, and we talked about the demand and congestion, but we're also talking about access, is to be able to have our public safety vehicles be able to navigate the roads, be able to get to the locations that they have to respond to service calls. And as many of us have seen, the cars just go wherever they can, as we've all experienced. And so the reality of just also having the resources dedicated on enforcement is also to address access. So there's a certain amount of parking management that regardless, you all never had a paid parking program before, and it was just addressing safety violations. And so now we're trying to proactively have consistent enforcement of those safety violations as well as our access issues. And I think that that was some of the neat things that came into play this last year was identifying where maybe regulatory signs needed to be improved. And that was an important aspect of our relationship with Caltrans as well is looking at locations where we see the cars are parking, they're infringing on some of our environmental locations. And so by being able to work as a collective between the agencies, those were also things that we were able to start to access, to address some of the access issues as well. So it's important when we talk about the design of a program is having a sustainable solution. You never bank a program on the enforcement revenue because if everybody followed the rules, we'll never write another parking ticket. That'd be amazing, right? But the reality of this is the paid parking program can ultimately be designed to not only pay for itself, but also to supplement that spillover effect, to ready ourselves for a residential parking permit program if we need it, to ready ourselves for an employee parking permit program. And that's the reason why having this model and potentially having a dynamic pricing model, that can also start to turn the dial one way or the other over the next several years. And that's also, I can't emphasize enough what the supervisor shared, the spillover effect to other areas in the basin is something that's critical. We also did a project in Douglas County this last year with those Effor Cove impacts, and because they turned the dial way up, you saw, it was an effective program, but you also saw the spillover effects of what happened to all of the neighboring beaches as well. So this is also about, you know, we're dipping our toes into the lake, we're not doing a cannonball in because it's real cold this time of the year. So, but I do think that's important when we talk about that sustainable model for sure.
Right, no, I think the model's great. I think the paid parking is great, and the spillover, of course, is going to happen. So, you know, you go ahead and give residential permits to people throughout the region. You're talking about a region that's really this big, right? So people will probably walk three or four blocks just to not pay for parking, or they got there and there's no parking, right? Then you implement it like we have some other parks where you've got to buy a parking permit days in advance on the weekend. So I think it's great, I think it helps the residents that are there, I think it helps control traffic so people aren't parked in the middle of nowhere, so they don't care if their car gets towed probably, but yeah, especially for, you know, emergency services. So I think the program's great. I was just concerned that, you know, being that Tahoe wants to be in this sector, that how would a program like that continue to, you know, over 10 years, you're looking at $600,000 in costs just to do this thing, which I think is a great program, don't get me wrong, but I just want to make sure that they can maintain it themselves. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any other comments from the board, so this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this? Anyone online?
Yes. Andrew, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hi, everyone. Andrew Ryan from the North Tahoe Business Association Economic Vitality Committee Meeting. Good afternoon. I wanted to take a moment to recognize the important and productive collaboration between our committee and Placer County's Department of Public Works and their consultant Dixon Resources. This partnership has played a key role in helping Kings Beach move towards a more vibrant, accessible, and maybe economically resilient future. Our committee, for some of you that don't know what we've been up to, we've been around for a while. We've got some pretty good highlights in our history. We championed the hybrid alternative for the downtown Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project, which was a $50 million improvement of our downtown building sidewalks and pedestrian ways and roundabouts. We also were key in the outreach and support for the Assessment District, which is an annual assessment to actually take care of those improvements in our commercial core. We started getting involved in parking in the 2015 North Lake Tahoe Parking Study advocating for parking management and removal of parking requirements that were stopping small-scale investment in the renewal of our town. And we took that a step further and advocated in the Tahoe Basin Area Plan for Parking Management and the Resort Triangle Transportation Plan. And we also introduced Public Works to the consultant, to Dixon Resources. So we kind of did a search and said, who's doing progressive parking and made that connection. We advocated for the project during the NTC, TOT's three-year sponsorship funding so that it could launch, get the funding to launch. And we've been happy to be part of this first-of-its-kind management solution here and happy to see that it's moving forward. So we've had a long track record of advocacy here, and we really appreciate the responsiveness. I don't think anyone at Public Works was excited to launch parking management, but they did it in response to our advocacy. So that is government being responsive to the citizens asking for change and asking for input, so that's important. You know, about, around 2010, in that time, we started noticing that our sales tax volume was going down, and then as we got closer to 2020, we were really noticing- volume was going down and then as we got closer to 2020, we were really noticing that we were flat and that our business model in Kings Beach was fill up your cooler somewhere else, fill up your gas tank somewhere else, drive to Kings Beach, park on a sidewalk for free, go to the beach all day, have a glorious time, and then leave us your trash on your way out. So in terms of the economics, we were carrying trash and maintenance burdens 10 times our expected costs or estimated costs. So we knew we were upside down. So bringing parking management was a way to try to bring balance. So, uh, as we move forward, we really hope to be, uh, included more regularly and it sounds like that path is, is in place. We think, um, as, as the ear of the business and the community, we really help Placer County move forward incrementally in a beneficial way that's efficient for the taxpayer money. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
No further comments.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, on the actions requested as read into the record.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Supervisor Gustafson, seconded by Supervisor Jones. Roll call for that or? No, all those in favor?
Sure.
Oh, I thought, I think Kevin read it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, she read it into the record.
He did, he did it at the end.
Oh, no, you're good.
No, I was hoping I wouldn't have to and I thought you did, so.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No. All right, thank you. With that, that concludes our items for today, so we will, um, adjourn. Thank you all for coming.